Kim, I noticed last time you've had a new, new baby, but I wasn't sure if it was yours. But now it's two nights in a row, so I'm going to go on a limb and say maybe it's yours. Oh, not happy. Good luck. Good luck. All right, I don't see anyone else popping in, so in the service of time, let's go ahead and get started and hope our other members join us. Dr. Morlick, would you mind doing the Spanish introduction for us, please?
Yes, I will. Buenas noches. Como siempre tenemos interpreters. Este haga clic en el botón de interpretación en el Zoom para escuchar la reunión en español. Muchas gracias por haber venido hoy y bienvenidos.
Perfecto. And, oh, we've got somebody to introduce as well. We have a new board secretary. Jen Nelson is the second human in that picture with Greg up there. And she is joining us. Let's see, you were on a meeting with us last week and then this weekend will be with us tonight. So slowly getting her ramped up and super excited to welcome her. So if you run into Jen anywhere eventually, as we start to get out more, say hi. Okay, and with that, I'm going to call to order our budget meeting, committee meeting, and give it over to Nikki.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go straight into our presentation. We have a fairly, it's, you know, fairly limited slides that we're going to have tonight, but we'll talk about each one. Go through the information. If you have any questions, be sure to speak up. And if I miss anybody, then Greg, just let me know and we'll pause and answer questions as we go. I will try to share my screen right now. Hold on. Okay, now you're seeing, okay, perfect. Why is it not going? There we go. Okay, so here's our agenda for tonight. We're, I'm going to go over the SSF estimates, what we know now. Talk about a few of the items, the details that go into that number. I'm going to review enrollment from last year to this year and some things that we're considering as we're planning for next year's budget and a lot of the question marks that are still out there. Then I'm talking about the ending fund balance, which has also been a topic for our board that we really keep an eye on that due to a few years ago, all the cuts that we've had, so I want to review that as well. And then finally, just some budget highlights. I'll have Joe talk a little bit about some things he's hearing as far as the budget from the state level, what they're trying to go for and that sort of thing. So that's our agenda at this point. Okay, so the first slide here, you've seen this before. I update it for the board meetings at different times and for other budget meetings. But this is where I'm showing each column for, from 1718 with the ADM numbers. So it shows the 1718 final, the 1819 final. 1920, we don't have that completely final yet. We'll be getting those numbers in the next couple of weeks before our May payment. So that's where anything that is due back for 1920 will come out of this May's payment, be reduced by that amount. And we've talked about that at a lot of the board meetings. I've been estimating about 500,000. There was a preliminary estimate that came out from ODE that looks like we might be at about 430. So we're looking pretty good as far as the estimate, pretty close to what I was thinking. But a few things could still change between that preliminary number and what we end up getting hit with in May. So there could still be a little bit of movement there. And the next three columns in the green columns, those are 2021 numbers, just different dates throughout the year. But you'll see in the third green column, that is the most recent SSF estimate for 2021. And you can see down under total ADMW, it shows that they're paying us at 5,610 students. Even though you can see in the column right before that, our in-house count is really about 5,200. So as we've talked about in the past, this is where that hold harmless comes in. So for 2021, we'll be paid at the 1920 ADM level. So that's why that estimate is showing the 5,600. Then it's not reflecting the reduction that you see in our in-house counts there, where it's closer to 5,200. And so looking to the right, so the estimate for 2122, you'll see the ADMW there is showing at 5,162. So next year, we'll actually have to recognize the reduction in ADM that we're having this year. What we don't know is if we go into 2122, if we recover any of those students, we could be paid at higher than that, but they're going to project us at the 5,100 at this point until we start, until October, when we submit our first numbers. Then they'll adjust us, I believe, for the December payment, once we get all those collections in for October. So we can, might see an increase in that, but again, that all just depends on our student numbers as we come in in the fall. So as we're projecting, we're projecting closer to the lower number because we want to be, want to be more conservative, be safe about it. Let's see, so in my notes down below, talking about, I note the hold harmless level. So this year will be paid at the 5,600. For 2122, the estimates are coming in at the 5,162. So that's a reduction of 447 students or weighted students. That is a real bodies, that's including the weights because our IEP numbers are directly related to our ADM number. So that's 11% of whatever our actual student count is. So as our students go down, that 11% is going to go down. So it's not a direct correlation there. And then my last note there talks about, we may recover partial enrollment in 2122, but it's hard to estimate, estimate what that number is going to be. We've been talking about that quite a bit, trying to come up with ideas. And I'll talk about a little bit more about that in a later slide. Are there any questions on this information?
I have one.
Okay.
So in the green area on this chart, we are being, in a sense, overpaid for more students than we have. And I know we have to make adjustment payments every year. Will we have to pay that back next year?
Right, so, so in the green there where it shows the 5,600, that is the number from 1920. So based on the ADMW, we're actually not being overpaid. That's where our whole harmless comes in. So we'll be paid at that rate. If we're, if we have to pay the state back, it's going to come from our local revenue that comes in high. So like our taxes coming in higher than was budgeted or estimated and those sorts of things. But this should be pretty close here. And then, yeah, and then in 2122, that'll adjust mid-year. We'll have a better idea once we get the kids coming in in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Were there any other questions on that one? So this next chart I have, it's enrollment by grade excluding the weights. So I just wanted to give a clear picture of where we were. And that's, those are numbers from March of 1920. And that column, you can see the total students in March of 1920 was 4,836 compared to the March of this year, 4,438. So you see, you can see that we're about 400 students down, which is a little different than prior number because of the weighting that was involved in that 447 I was just talking about. But these are real student numbers. And so by grade, you can see it, you know, 12th grade, we're only down about nine, you know, nine students, 11th, two students. So the high school numbers didn't go down very much, and that makes sense because they're getting out of school. But you can see in the lower grades where there were significant reductions per grade, like kindergarten, 76 kids, first grade, 65, second, 75, third, 92. So those are big numbers. A lot of those shifted over to COA. So the second to bottom line where it says special programs, the 304 students. So a lot of those reductions shifted into that special program. But overall, we're still down 398 students. Let's see, another thing to look at here is our senior class at 387 students, where the last several years, we've been averaging about 340 kids or kindergarteners coming in. So each year, we've been losing about 40 students just based on the senior kindergarten numbers. Let's see. So in, in estimating the impact of this going into next year, we've talked about it. And I'm looking at estimating about 150 kids returning as a safe number. So that, as the chart I showed you before, that shows the ADMW down. I'll manually kind of adjust that and come up with the number for the budget, assuming and hoping that at least we're going to get 150 students back of that 398. Hopefully, it'll come in higher than that, but I would hate to overproject that and end up on the wrong side of my numbers with that. Are there any questions on this chart?
I do have one quick question, Nikki. With the kids who are in COA, does that still weigh in to our enrollment numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they do. And that's why they're still in that total down below the 300 and, or the 390 because they're still part of the, the school and part of our numbers at that point.
So with the COA kids, do we have information on like what grades they're in?
We do. I did not pull it for this, but we could get that as far as which grade and break that down.
Mostly, I'm curious to see like if we had those, you know, of those 390, since there's so many more kids in COA, what grade levels that impacts the most? Mostly curious to see on that.
Right, right. Yeah, and I can break that down differently and just send that out to you for information. Yeah. Are there any other questions on this? Just getting out of the way. Okay, so this screen are, shows snapshots of my SSF estimates for 2021 and then 2122. And this is just to reflect, to show you the dollar amount changes between the two years. So in the top section, the very top box, it's the extended ADMW. And you can see where we're being paid at the 5,610 for the current year. If you go down to the fourth one, you can see where I was talking about being paid at the 5,162 for the 2122 school year. The other numbers to note here is the ratio that they are being, that's being applied to the, to the ADMW. And that ratio is our enrollment compared to the state enrollment. So from 2021 to 2122, our ratio has dropped, which is causing our money to go down. In addition, you'll see that the teacher experience adjustment has gone down as well. So then that impacts our bottom line and be a reduction as well. So that was, that's the main pieces of those. And off to the right, I've just highlighted the totals here. So 2021, per student amount is $8,797. And that gives us about 49 million in total. But you can see for 2122, the per student amount is estimated at 8,705. So we're actually, right now, they're estimating the reduction of per student for our SSF. So over, that's pretty significant when you're multiplying it out by our number, by our weighting, our ADMW. So between those two numbers, it's about a $4.4 million reduction. As I talked about in the previous screen, we're guesstimate, or I'm estimating recovering about 150 of those students. So if we multiply that out by the 8,705, we might gain back about 1.3 million of that loss that we're expecting.
Nikki, uh huh. Could you explain why the drop between the state and the, our district? The ratio?
Well, yeah, the ratio, because that ratio is our percentage, the number of our students in relation to the total students in the state.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So that's, that's where that comes from. So that just, I'll go ahead.
Is this based on the 9.1?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll talk about the, and that's, that plays into part of it as well, as far as the state number goes, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
When I do a little bit of an update later on, we'll talk a little bit about why that differential between the 8797 and the 8705.
Are there any more questions on this one? Okay. So the next screen, you're probably familiar with. I had this last year. I just updated it with a little more information. So I'm showing all the ending fund balances from 1415 through the current year, or estimated for the current year. And so you can see 1415, we're at 1.8. And then in 1617 is when the district had the big scare and we were down to 338,000. And so in 1718, they made massive reductions. So you start to see that number come up due to those, those hard decisions that everybody made. And since then, we have gradually gained some ground. So our final numbers for 1920 coming into this year for the general fund was 9,341,000. Right now, I just ran numbers again today and was, was looking at where we are. I'm thinking we're going to be in the, the 9.9, maybe 10 million range going into next year, which is a good thing when you're looking at our contingency. Our, a piece of that is our contingency that we want to set aside. So that's about 3.8 million to 4 million. So you take that off of the top. And so this is, you know, this proves why we wanted to grow the sending fund balance because if we're going into next year and we're looking at losing 3.8 to 4 million, that's where our buffer comes in, and that's why we need this buffer to catch those swings from year to year. Hopefully, that's not very common. This was, you know, the COVID year. Usually, we wouldn't have that huge of a swing. But this is exactly why we wanted to build up this number so we have a safety net and not have to go into major reduction mode with the, with the school district. Going into next year, because our budget will naturally be getting a little bit bigger just due to roll up costs and wages and all that good stuff. We'll have to up the contingency a little bit. And I'm thinking 4 million to 4.2 million should be our base as our general fund grows next year. Our general fund budget grows next year. Are there any questions on these numbers or the ending fund balance in general?
Okay. I just stopped it there for a second. Can you say about 4.2 million again? That figure came up and I didn't know what we're talking about.
Well, with that, I was just talking about as I'm budgeting for next year, for 2122, naturally, the budget's going to go up. And since the contingency is based on that budget, a percentage of that, the contingency that we'll set aside will be higher next year. So right now, it's at about a 3.8, so I'd expect it to be around, you know, 4 million or a little bit above, depending where my final numbers land.
So you're planning to go spend up, spend most of that extra buffer, the other 5 million or so?
I'm, I'm hoping not to have to spend most of it because there's a few other things in place. I mean, we have the enrollment that's gone down, but we also have the pers rate that has gone down a little bit. So we're going to have some savings in that area. And I believe that was about the 1.5 million. So that'll help buffer that a little bit. So I'm hopeful that we're not going to have to spend down that whole chunk. I don't think so, but I don't have everything put in yet, so I'll know more in a, in a week or so.
All right, that's good. Nikki, when we had the board meeting last, two weeks ago, we talked about this roughly 9.9. Something was very close to that in your, in your estimated ending fund balance, but there was also expected payments, things that were probably going to reduce that to more like nine or a little under.
Right, right.
Is this got, is this, is this where we were last two weeks ago, or is this a million dollars better than we were last two weeks?
This is a million dollars better, probably.
You can do that every two weeks?
Huh?
You do that every two weeks?
Well, I just, I updated a little sooner than I normally would just because I was doing this tonight and looking at it.
Can't count on you producing a million dollars every two weeks, huh?
No, no, not at all. And I had the updated estimate, so that, I also applied that. So that kind of changes it because I'm comparing the updated ODE estimate to where I am now. And so actually, the due back to the state for the current year is a couple hundred thousand higher than our last board meeting. So you'll see that, you know, in a couple of weeks or, yeah, when I report on that later on this month. But all those numbers are moving around a little bit and we'll adjust this, this as well. But I'm, I'm pretty confident we should land around here because we do have, you know, our big ticket item, like our transportation. I have it fully encumbered. And this year, we've had like limited transportation. So I'm hoping that I'll have a little bit of buffer left from that. That will help with any unexpected expenses at this point. So I'm, I'm relatively confident that that will come in around there.
Great, thank you.
Uh huh. Are there any other questions on this one?
So again, to reiterate, if we were to come in with our enrollment still very low, we'd be looking at, regardless of what the rate is per student, we'd still be looking at a reduction, could be upwards of 4 million if all things work out. So that would come out of this 9.9. Right, so that's, that's the, you know, as the board, when you put in this policy years ago, this is the reason you have a policy like this, because it allows you to then, I'm sure you were not predicting COVID, although if you were, you should have been also buying lottery tickets. But if you think about the kinds of things, this, this could be disastrous and there are other places that are working through this situation. So even without the change in the ADMW rate, with a change in enrollment and other things like that, when those things come together, the numbers could be a significant loss. So that is part of the reason about having fund valves. It's healthy for times like these when you need to, to look at a $4 million hole and figure out how to, how to deal with it, so.
Yep. Okay, I'll go to the next one unless there's any question on this or. Okay. So this one, I'm just going to talk through a little bit. I didn't do slides on every single one of the B's, so if you have questions, again, just speak up. But the first item, we spent a little time today going through the different grants that have come in. And so the Esser grant, we have Esser 2 and what we call informally Esser 3 money coming in. The Esser 2 funding is about 2.3 million, but we have two years to spend it. So its end date is actually in September of '23. And the Esser 3 money end date is actually in September of '24. So with those two pieces, we're able to kind of supplement some of the curriculum things that we need to do, the technology that we've needed to update and replace through this whole process. We're talking about some mental health training, that's a big, big thing coming up. And just getting all staff trained up on all of that. Let's see. Yeah, those were the main things with the Esser funding. They, they also have one more piece, it's like, it's called summer grants. It's for summer programming, providing, you know, enrichment activities, credit recovery for high school. And that one is about 1.5 million, but it has a lot of strings to it yet. We, we haven't really planned what to do with that one or if we're going to be able to utilize that one at this point because we have summer school stuff already going through other means to measure 98 and other funding streams. So that is still out there and we're still talking about that one as well. So SSF funding, so I'll let Joe talk a little bit about this because he's been in these meetings a bit more as far as the talk around what level we're going to end up at.
Right, so the question I asked earlier of Nikki is the, the building of the budget that we've been doing so far has been on 9.1, which is the, sort of where the, both the governor and the co-chairs landed. They actually started a little bit lower than that at about 897 million or 8.97 billion. So right now, they're at 9.1 billion. The legislature, of course, is still in session. The target to basically hold harmless for us is a 9.6 billion, which is what lobbyists and other folks are working on to get us to that level. So I think one of our challenges is trying to figure out where we would budget. Would budget at 9.1, do a budget at 9.3 or 9.6? Today, we've got some information that we should be building a budget at least 9.3. They're confident that it'll actually end up higher at some point, but they never know. So they said, actually, build your budget on 9.3 instead of 9.1. So we're, we'll make some adjustments as we go, but we know that that process still takes a bit of time. We do this dance every other year, it seems like. So getting to the point where we can be more settled about knowing what our budget numbers are will help. That will then change, of course, the, what was 8705 and the, what was the other number, 8749?
8797, I believe.
97, right, 97. So that's where that number will change. So 8705 is based upon the 9.1. That's because that's what the state is estimating because that's the current number. When the number changes, so if you see it in the paper, about 9.1, 9.3, 9.6 billion, wherever that lands, that will then change our ADMW calculation and will change our per student amount from 8705 to something else. So right now, we're getting a double hit because we have both an enrollment loss as well as an ADMW number that doesn't even cover our costs as we do what are called roll-up costs. So if we just take exactly what we have now and roll it forward to next year, it all costs you more. Insurance costs are go up, employee costs go up. All of those things are, are just part of the natural progression. So when they talk about roll-up costs and you read some of those things that may be out there, those, the, the changes in budget year to year. So we've gotten information that we will probably shift our thinking to a 9.3 and possibly higher than that. thinking to a 9.3 and possibly higher than that. But 9.3 is a good number for us to to start creating some additional budgeting on. Anything else from that? You're going to do the SIA and measure 98? Okay. Any questions on the S S F funding before we move on to the next two bullets? And again, this is information that we're getting all the time. So I, that information came to us or it came to me today at about a 3:30 meeting or 4 o'clock meeting. So it's all going to be coming in pretty rapidly as we're developing this budget. So there will be some sliding around as we try to figure out where to land on, what numbers we're actually going to get from the state.
Get those numbers, Nikki, actually, will we get those numbers like around June at the end of legislative session officially? Or when do those generally officially come in?
You know, anytime. We've gotten those numbers in the fall before. So we hope to get them solidified much sooner. So that's why, I mean, we're always doing a budget based on a guess and an estimate on all the information coming in. So we just kind of have to weed through it and come up with the, the, the best guess and what's safest, what's most conservative and, and, and also, you know, not too conservative because we don't want to make reductions that we don't have to make and all of those sorts of things. So, but hopefully sooner than later. But the budget will be in print before we know because I have to have that ready in two weeks. So I know we won't have this answer by then. So the third bullet just is SIA funding. Right now it's still looking like about the 70% level, which is about 3.1 million. We're working on adjusting that plan. Just I was talking with Derek and Luke today on finalizing some of that stuff. And so that's, we still aren't going to be fully funded with that. There's no indication. But, you know, as they're discussing the S S F, there might be a little bit of movement on that, but there hasn't. I have not heard much discussion about that. So we're assuming that we'll be at the 70%. And on measure 98, we're hearing that it's going to be, going to be fully funded. So we're moving forward with those numbers. Hopefully, we're not surprised and, and we were, we were there this year too. So that should not be pulled back. I'd be surprised if it was. So anyway, so right now that's looking good for us and we shouldn't have to adjust that down. Are there any questions on any of these items or in general? These are just resource things that were in here from before. And again, if there's any questions or you'd like information, either give us a call or you can email the budget email here and that goes to a few of us. So hopefully you'll get a response back pretty quickly. And that's really all I had tonight was just updating the grants and the enrollment and all of that. Are there any other questions?
Just a quick comment for everyone too. We know that there are additional dollars coming for some summer school things. Those allocations are still being worked out. So we'll have more information at our next budget meeting. The E S S E R numbers are also, some of them we have, some of them we don't have yet. So those federal dollars, we'll have a better idea of how to talk about what those are. Remember, those are one-time dollars that we're getting coming in, but we will talk about what those look like as well. Some of them are just going to be trickling in over time. I think at one point they estimated they wouldn't be able to tell us about summer school stuff until May, which we already have summer school plans heading into place that we had figured out how to fund. So we'll be able to to make some adjustments later on. But some of these things will continue to come in over the development of this budget cycle and possibly even into the fall as, as we continue to develop the our understanding of what they are and how they come in.
Great. Are there any questions for Nikki or Joe?
I do have one question for you guys. As you know, COVID develops over the summer and people get a better idea of what's going to happen with school come the fall, are we going to just, you know, worst case scenario, look at numbers if enrollment does not go up? Because if people look at it and say, okay, do we want to repeat of this year and they, you know, say no and, you know, go to homeschool or alternative programs, are we contingency budget planning for that scenario?
So, all right, so you're asking if this number is the number that we're budgeting that reflects our lower numbers right now? Our lower enrollment?
For not gaining back students.
Right, right. Yeah, we will have to have a contingency plan. And also that kind of goes back to the ending fund balance conversation also. So if we have that there, we could rely on that a bit too. We're hopeful that over the next year or two, you know, we'll see that enrollment come back up. And that's where the S R funding is going to be very helpful because we can spread that over several years. So we're not going to take and spend that in 2122, just in case. Our plan is kind of to spread that out. So hopefully we have a bit of a safety net moving forward over those next few years using those that funding as well. So hopefully between those few things that will be okay if those 150 students don't return.
Right. So on one of the.
I was just going to ask follow up. In that scenario, what would our operating surplus or deficit look like if we saw no, no enrollment bounce back whatsoever?
Well, that was about 1.3 million.
Surplus or deficit?
Well, if we, so if I'm, when I talked about it before, I was looking at if we had 150 students come back, that would bring 1.3 million back to us. Where the overall loss right now, they're showing about 4 million. So our current, looking at our current enrollment, we'd be down about 4 million. But if we gain back that 150, you can take the 1.3 off of that as far as the revenue. Does that make sense?
So what that means is that if those students don't come back, we'll be looking at trimming $4 million from our annual budget?
No, the 1.3. Because we'll build the budget on taking into account the enrollment reduction. So we're ahead of time. The only thing that we would be really estimating or artificially adding back is hoping that we get 150 students back of that 400. So if we got none of the 150 back, we'd be looking at cutting or carving or using vending fund balance to make up that 1.3 million or using contingency, which is what it's there for.
But you can't, I, you'd assume that that would continue on in in future years. So I guess what I'm asking is how much will we be eating out of the ending fund balance each year based on numbers where students don't return?
Well, it all depends where those numbers end up. Because I mean, with the, with estimates we have right now, you're looking at, you know, 3.8 to 4 million. So again, if that continued into the next year, comparing where we are now to then, you'd still be looking at that number. The 3.8 to 4.
So if that was the new reality, then we'd have to cut our operating budget by about $4 million a year.
Yes. Are there any other questions? Okay. Think you might get a little dinner break before the board meeting.
So thank you, Nikki and Joe. And as always, if there's any questions that come up, send them on to that budget email address. So also just a little heads up for next meeting that we have. It's when we elect our chair, our committee chair. So it's a fairly low commitment job. You need to basically run the meetings and do some other small things. Kat could speak to it better. She's been chair, I think, the last two years. So just be thinking and if you're interested, let me know or let the budget email know and be ready next meeting for that election. Okay, any last thoughts?
Just about the, do we use the same Zoom link for the next meeting?
Yes, I'm going to recommend when she stops that we turn off cameras and mute and just rejoin at 7 o'clock and I'll just leave this meeting running.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Well, all adjourned meeting. Everybody have a good night. Thanks for coming.
Six fifty-three P M. Status bar item.
Hi Rebecca, it's Brandy.
Hi Brandy, how are you?
I'm good. It's sunny, so it's. Um, hey, would you mind doing the flag salute for us tonight?
Sure.
Okay, cool. Thank you. We'll start at six fifty-eight, so we got a couple of minutes.
All right, good. Was the whole budget committee there at the end?
Yes, they were all.
They were all there, good.
All right, everyone, start making your way back if you can hear my voice. It was nice to have a little bit of a break, though. Jen, how has the transition been so far? You could just up, down, sideways.
I- in between.
She hasn't officially started yet. She's still doing her old job. So all she's done is the meeting last week and this meeting tonight.
Yeah, that's a lot. Well, we're glad you're here. Ron, did your clock say at seven o'clock yet? Okay. Let's do that. Uh, okay, who are we missing? Anyone? I think we've got all the board members here. Perfect. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Seven o'clock. The Newburgh School District Board of Directors. So we're gonna start our meeting tonight with the flag salute and Director Pyros has graciously volunteered. So whenever you're ready, Rebecca.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have reviewing our agenda. So it's of course a busy night. We only meet, it seems like to be busy, that's true. Uh, okay, so after this, we'll go into our public comments. I'm understanding that we have one public comment this evening. Go into board comments and superintendent comments. We'll look at our consent agenda. Then we'll hear a couple of reports, one a school in-person update from Dr. Morlock, and then our dual-language report with Jillian Felazarta. Um, we'll circle back to a little bit of old business, our school start time block schedule proposal. Take a break around eight thirty. Uh, come back and talk about our superintendent evaluation process for the coming school year. Um, our superintendent contract renewal that we just wrapped up. Um, talk about our bond sale proceeds and then a discussion around the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two academic calendar and start dates. So it's a full night. This is also just for everyone watching, um, after our six P M budget committee meeting, so we are getting to it tonight. All right, let's go ahead and start with our public comment. I believe we have Drew Gallagher with us tonight.
And I do have my little notices, so.
Thank you. And just a reminder, while Drew comes over, the board really appreciates community engagement and involvement and listening to constituents and appreciate people's time and effort to join us, um, for these meetings and to offer comments. Drew, see you. So follow Ron. He's gonna have your, um, your minute reminders. And go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I will keep my eyes plastered on Ron. Um, good evening. Um, I'm here speaking as a resident of Dundee with kids in Dundee and C B and the high school. I'm also a teacher at the high school. And I just wanted to restate my concern for the third time regarding having secondary schools start after elementary schools. And the reason I'm doing this is that the only real response I've heard from the board regarding this matter is that it's easier to find daycare after school than before school. And the fact is, this simplistic and frankly quite dismissive response to a major concern for changing an entire system for a community like Newburgh and Dundee, I don't really find it acceptable, especially without a plan in place. We have a significant portion of our community, excuse me, that relies on their older children to watch their younger children after school. So assuming that everything will be hunky-dory after flip-flopping start times is reckless and will also further marginalize portions of our community who don't have the means to take care of this. Not to mention, I don't even know if enough after-school daycare exists in Newburgh to handle this major transition. So first, I'd like the board members who might be voting to flip the start times to go on record for the community and say they will prioritize and support funding where it's necessary to mitigate the problem that flipping these schedules will undoubtedly cause. We must recognize and proactively plan for serious problems that will arise from changing something as fundamental as school start times. Secondly, excuse me. I'd like to address something that came up two weeks ago and will do so without names so as not to impugn certain board members. When one board member brought up the fact last, uh, last meeting that it didn't sound like teachers had been formally asked about a schedule change, the board member who was in charge of the start time committee responded to this concern with exasperation and then dismissed continued polling as well as said that teachers had been directly asked. As a community member, I did receive a poll. But as a staff member and part of four to five hundred people who work for this district, we were not asked. That's important to point out. Thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing you guys, uh, you all discuss this as part of your vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew, for joining us. Okay. Next, we have board comments. Um, I generally call on people, which I could do, but is there anybody who's ready to start us off tonight? Okay, I'm gonna start calling names. Uh, Director Woodruff, do you have any comments this evening?
I don't. The only thing I have is just a technical thing. The whole family, we've been having a lot of connectivity issues with Zoom and the last couple of meetings I've gotten broken up, so if I do, I apologize for that. We've tried a bunch of different things and hopefully one of them will work.
Good luck. I realized we did not have Dr. Morlock give our interpretation introduction in Spanish, so if the board is comfortable, I'd like to pause and go ahead and do that. If you're willing, Dr. Morlock, thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that, Bob. Uh, Director Brown, do you have any comments this evening? Nope, you're muted.
Sorry, Joe is getting in my way there. I got invited to the Newburgh High School senior night, uh, got a special invite for Newburgh Boys Soccer, and so um, it was super fun. Uh, I thought their coach Carlos was, uh, outstanding. When you go to a senior night, you get to hear all the coaches' comments back towards his players. We should keep him around for a long time. He's a good coach. They play really well, too. They beat Jesuit two-zero. And, um, a couple of players, I guess I'm not supposed to use names, I won't use two names of kids I've actually coached also, but, uh, really a great program and the parents were super supportive. It was a fun night. And, uh, it was a good win for the Tigers. And again, Coach Carlos is outstanding. One of these days, I'd like to meet him and, and, uh, really admire the way he handled, uh, the whole evening. He did great for the kids and the parents, so my shout-out to Newburgh Boys Soccer.
Great. Uh, Director Pyros, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, um, I want to, um, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of last week, I attended the National School Board Association online conference. And it was very, um, worthwhile, very tiring. I can imagine students sitting in front of us, uh, screen for six hours a day. It is draining. And I appreciate, appreciated learning that or experiencing that. The, the conference, I learned, I took classes on effectual, um, board, board teamwork and governance teamwork and learning about the, the latest Supreme Court ruling on LGBTQ, laws being made and about, um, how to be, become an inclusive educator. And I hope to, to write a report for the board on this. It, it, um, was very worthwhile. And then Thursday night, I attended the Mountain View Middle School parent meeting where they, they discussed how the, the students are coming back in person to the school. And it made me realize how much has gone into the thought process of making these, the schools safe for our students and our staff. And, um, everything from, from entry, bill, entering the building, how to walk down the halls, how to, um, to go to use the restrooms, how, how to, um, um, operate in the building. Again, it was, it was very, um, detail-oriented. And, uh, my, I commend all the thought that went behind all that. And then just to let the board know, um, a few months ago, the Willamette Education Service, um, division, division put out a, a call for any applicants for their budget committee, board, and, um, I put in my application and I was, uh, appointed last Thursday to a two, two-year term on the W E S D. And this W E S D serves Newburgh students and it will be a good opportunity to get Newburgh's, um, influence on that, hopefully. So, thank you so much. And thank you to Drew for speaking. He's been, um, quite vocal in this and we do hear him.
Thank you, Rebecca, and congratulations, too. That's exciting. Uh, Director Shannon, do you have any comments this evening? Director Shannon, do you have any comments this evening?
I do not.
Director Penya, do you have any comments this evening?
I do. I just wanted to, you know, thank the board for taking that extra time last week to. Meet with O S B A and their commitment to equity and having a more equitable education for our school district. Thank you.
And Director Muck, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, I'm just a little bit of comment on the upcoming election. We have three seats up for election with. Two two candidates at each seat. I've noticed that all six of us now have Facebook pages and I encourage people to look at them. Not sure how to tell you how to find a Facebook page, but if you find mine, there's links to all the other ones, so. And I'm hoping that we can actually use media this way and. Reminders here on the Zoom meetings to help people pay attention to the election and make it more of a deliberative election than sometimes it might be. So that's all I had to say.
Great. Well, last week I was also at the National School Board Association Conference and. It would have been really nice to be able to be there somewhere in person with Rebecca and have that experience together, but. Obviously, because of COVID, everything was virtual, so we attended virtually together. The sessions began Thursday and ran all the way through Saturday and it was it was a long few days. But the major theme running through the sessions that I attended was resiliency and long term equity work. You know, across the nation, this this was a conference of school boards from across the entire country. School board members shared ideas and experiences in these two really important areas of work. I attended various sessions. One was on the importance of the superintendent. Board relationship and the importance of strong committees in our board governance. Another session spoke of the importance of diversity in our staff and student populations and then several more sessions. But in every session, as school board members, we were called repeatedly to try to remove the barriers to education that we see. And like Ron said, midterm elections are coming up soon. April twenty seventh is the last day to register to vote. April twenty eighth is when the ballots begin to be mailed and of course, May eighteenth is Election Day, so be sure to vote. And lastly, since I missed last week's meeting and Bob's announcement, I just want to thank Bob for his years of service. Bobby, you're a constant voice of reason, sensibility and compassion. In your time as chair, was a time of some difficulty and change, which you met with professionalism and steady leadership. And I'm really grateful to serve with you for the next three months and know that your contributions to our community will continue. All right, with that, let's turn it over to Dr. Morlock for superintendent comments.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of quick ones tonight. We have plenty on the agenda, so I'll keep it short. We have begun our design committee work yesterday was. For the high school today was Catalyst School and Thursday's Edwards Dundee will be coming soon. I want to thank all the folks who joined our design committees for the bond. It's a pretty good commitment and there's lots to do, but it was exciting to to see people joining us and being involved in this. I just want to thank everybody who. Who joined us to do this, to do that work with us as we design these spaces for all kids. Also, many of you have probably seen in the news Oregon's waiver to completely. Eliminate state testing this year was denied as it was for most states, I think all but one. So there is a, there will be some state testing this year. It will be reduced set. Of tests and reduced subjects, so I'll just give you the rundown quickly and we'll put this up. We'll put this out in other communications as well as the superintendent memo this week. So the plan currently for state testing with consistent with the recent guidance from the state is that we would have. For grade three and six, just English Language Arts. For grade four, math, for grade five, science. For seventh graders, they would have both B L A and math, eighth graders, math and science, and eleventh graders, English Language Arts and math. So some are doing the same they've done before, some are doing fewer. As you well know, this will. Be one of those bumps in the data that we won't have a lot of information about how students have done, at least on a statewide test for a few years, and so this. Sets us back in terms of that, but we'll be looking at other ways to assess students so we know kind of what their growth is and how we can accelerate them. Through the the process we've been in now. So we we as a state received this guidance from the from the federal government, from the testing plan. We will be only administering the multiple choice part of the test. The other performance tasks are bigger things that have taken longer. Those have been removed, so it'll be a far shorter test. There's no participation rate requirement this year, unlike in previous years where that shows up on your state report card. They understand the challenges. Of trying to do state tests between both the C D L and the hybrid. For our hybrid students, we'll be doing those, we'll be administering those tests during school and for C D L, we will schedule them. To come in most likely on Fridays, so we'll just let you know more of that as we get it. These plans are still developing. But that is the latest that we have from that, so I think with that I will turn it back over to you so we can move into the meeting. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you for keeping us updated on the ever changing everything. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. There's no donations or anything to call it special tonight, so I would entertain a motion.
I moved at the Newburgh School Board Directors. Accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Is there any conversation or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Okay, next we'll move into reports and presentations and we'll have our school in person update with Dr. Morlock.
Okay, thank you again. So as you know, we've we've had our K five students in full time. They've been doing very well. It's gone, I think swimmingly. It's been great to have kids in the building and kind of adjusting to. The current normal as we navigate through the buildings, the systems and figure out how our students are doing. We are looking forward, of course, to the upcoming return of our secondary students, which will begin presently coming up on next Monday. So again, and I talked about this last time, I just wanted to highlight this for everybody who is in C D L. With the return of the secondary students, we're going to shift the C D L times for the students who are reigning in C D L, and that's about thirty percent. We want to make sure to offer the classes that that we needed and classes that the kids desired in terms of both core classes and electives. And so we made some adjustments to our C D L schedule so they would match the hybrid in person. And that goes again from eight in the morning until one P M. There just was no way for us to be able to offer the classes that students needed with that number of students staying home or remaining in C D L, so we wanted to make sure that we could do. To do that for them. It's a four period day, you know, so eight classes overall. Every other day, they go Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, like we've been doing before, with Fridays remaining a day for teachers and staff to connect, catch up with. It has been something that I've gotten a lot of feedback from both families and staff, that the Fridays have been very useful for them to connect with students who. Aren't making it to class or aren't showing up or need extra support, and so that's been very helpful for us during this. Very challenging time over the last several several months. So secondary schools have been communicating with families that student schedules are being finalized, getting them ready to go to come in next week. I know that they're very excited about having students in the building. Will be far more students than we've had so far, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and. You know, we're doing all the same protocols, the safety protocols that we have been working on at our elementaries. Transportation, everything's ready to go, so really looking forward to having students in the building. Also additionally, just as a side note, you know that our cases have tracked slightly upward in recent weeks. In the packet, we had listed ninety three point five cases per hundred thousand. For the two week period ending April third, that count is now up to one hundred and two, one hundred and two point seven in Yanho County. And one hundred and fifty six point four in the whole state for the weekend in April nine, so we're continuing to track upward. This was, if you'll remember from a presentation many moons ago, all time is relative in COVID time, but I think. It was at least a couple of months ago when I did a presentation to show you a chart where there was a prediction of this kind of later spike coming. So we sort of knew this would be coming our way at some point, especially post spring break. We are hopeful that we can tamp this down quickly with the rates of vaccinations and people continue to wear masks and doing those things, so. Yes, as people are vaccinated, we'll continue to wear masks, you'll be continuing to be required to have a mask in school. And on the bus, and I think if we continue to work together, we can knock this out. We just have to keep going. A little bit longer and taking care of everybody else, so we can make sure we can get back to, I think, what everybody would appreciate, which is a regular. Regular school year and feel a little sense of normalcy with everybody back together, so that's really the goal to get back to that, so please. Wear your mask, wash your hands, cover your cough and get a vaccine if you are eligible or if you are able. So we can get through this finally together. That's what I have for you for in person.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Joe, I wanted to really just quickly say thank you to the secondary principals, Tammy, Mark, Terry and Casey last week had the secondary return to school virtual. Information session in both English and Spanish and I attended as a parent and it was really beneficial and informative and I appreciate the time that. Our schools are are focusing on outreach and information for both students and parents. Having said that, do you have any information for parents waiting on bus times and schedules? I'm assuming schools will be reaching out fairly soon for that. Should people refer back to their individual schools for that information?
Yes, go start with your school to to get more information about where they are when they're posting them. Part of this is about finalizing who's actually coming. So the routes can be, you know, finalized and then the times can be built because part of that is, you know, if we have people who haven't said anything and then we skip their street, but. Now we're finding out they're coming in, so they're still finalizing all those bus schedules to make sure we can get them. Get everybody picked up that's supposed to be coming in, but just contact your local school, the kid, where your kid's going to be attending. And they'll get you more information about bus times and and what to expect and what that looks like.
Ron, did you have a question?
No.
No, okay, I saw the unmute. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. Forward to the next update. The next update will have secondary back in. It's quite exciting. All right, Gillian, we're a little bit early. Are you ready?
Well, I think that our guest speakers are not quite here, but I was gonna have them present first, but I think what I'll do is just. Present first and then when they join us, they can close out my presentation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I just wanted to verify with Greg, they're not here yet, are they?
I just promoted Emmanuel. I'm looking and here and I'll do Antonio, the teacher. And then what's the second name I'm looking for again, just since you're there?
Christopher and Noalani.
Is he? So Emmanuel is not, is that the wrong one?
No, Emmanuel is one of the students as well. There's three.
Okay, so I'm sorry, say the say the names again.
Christopher. Emmanuel and Noalani.
Okay. It looks like we're still waiting on the others.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and get started and I'm sure they'll be here in a few minutes. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. So this update on the dual language program is going to share a little bit about. Our actual students in the program, our seventh graders this year, one of our dual language teachers. And some of the goals of our program that we refined over the last few years, as well as where our program is now and what's coming next. So this evening, we will have Antonio Peña Naya, our dual language literacy teacher for Mountain View Middle School. We will also have Emmanuel Alvarado, a seventh grade dual language student at Mountain View. Christopher Cervantes, another seventh grade dual language student at Mountain View. And Noelani Diaz, our last seventh grade dual language student at Mountain View that will present tonight. I picked these students because they're our first group of students that's gone through the dual language program, so I'm really excited to hear. How it's been going for them and their experience in the program, so we will close with their. Speeches and contributions to the presentation. Oops, my computer is also having issues, so please bear with me. So I wanted to start with our traditional dual language graph. There's a lot of content on this graph. And the thing that I want you to take a look at is this top green line across the graph. So this line represents students that are in a dual language program, so our program is considered a two way dual language program. That means that we have fifty percent of our students in dual language that are English speakers and fifty percent of our students in dual language that are Spanish speakers. So there are peer models for all students when they're learning language. This is the most effective way for students to acquire language. So what this graph is showing us, this black dotted line, is our students who are in English medium classrooms are, this is the national average performance level. And for students that are acquiring language that are in dual language classrooms, and they are actually able. To increase their language acquisition as compared to other programs. So for general reference, our traditional. E S L pullout, which is what we currently have in the district, is this red line here. And we are transitioning our E L D program as well so that we can better support students' language needs. So really what this graph is showing us is all the various models and the effects that they have on students' ability to be able to acquire language and then apply it to their academic learning. And so what this shows us is that by about fifth grade to seventh grade in this range here. Students begin to become as proficient as their students who are monolingual in English classrooms, so students who are English speakers in English classrooms. Students that are acquiring language are at that same proficiency level in a dual language program. Whereas in other models, they never quite get there pretty significantly. And we actually do see that downward curve and I know that's been a topic of conversation. In past board meetings about some of the state testing results, the secondary level for our language, for our students who are acquiring language. And this is one of the reasons why. So we are definitely in the process of updating and shifting all of our programs, but this is one of the most. Foundational graphs on language acquisition. It's by Thomas and Collier, who are. Pretty well known in terms of this research. I know I just kind of shot a lot of it out there at you, but this is really the foundation of our dual language program. And the reason why we continue to do this program and continue to add grades every year. So in our dual language program, we have three main focuses, three big goals of dual language, to be able to develop bilingualism and biliteracy. To have all students be able to reach grade level academic achievement in both Spanish and English. And to create social, cultural competence and critical consciousness, and I'll go a little bit more in depth into what that really means for our program. So around the first goal, really thinking about bilingualism is a really, we're talking about the ability for all of our students to be able to listen, speak. And understand both English and Spanish, and then we're thinking about students being biliterate, so that's when students are able to speak, write, read and listen. As well as be able to think and make connections between the two languages. And if you step into a dual language classroom, you might hear a word called translinguaging, and so that's when students are using both English and Spanish to create meaning in the content that they're learning, so they're using all of their language skills. Which is an awesome tool to be able to have, so the dual language program really supports access to content and language development. In both of our languages and in our case, in our dual language program, that's English and Spanish. And these really work together and to strengthen the language. Spanish is a language that has a lot less. Like sounds than the English language and it's a much simpler language in terms of the phonetic piece. And so if students are beginning to acquire Spanish first and that transfers to English, it makes acquiring the English language a lot easier. Because they've already mastered half the rules versus having to start at the beginning without some of that background information, so really being able to have all students be bilateral. And be able to speak both languages. Our second goal is that in both of those languages, there's grade level expectations in all content areas. Including those students that might be a student with a disability that has an I E P. Or students who are identified as English learners who are acquiring language, regardless of what the language of instruction is. They're able to be proficient in both English and Spanish. In addition to any assessment. in addition to any assessment that might be used. So classes, a big component of this is that classes are offered in both program languages. And I'll get into a little bit more detail on what that looks like in our current model and where we're going in the future in just a few slides. And then finally, our goal three, the social cultural competence component is really where we're looking at the similarities and differences between our languages and our cultures. And not just seeing these as differences, but really having opportunities for our students to connect rather than seeing them as obstacles to overcome. So thinking about how our students and our teachers, parents and community members really support their role and advocate in terms of the ability to have both cultural and linguistic equity in dual language. So really, the goal is, we're talking about equity in both languages, English and Spanish, as well as the cultural components that go with both English and Spanish in our dual language program. And then that we have stakeholders in our district that defend the students' right to be able to access a diverse curriculum in both languages and have access to instructional materials so that they can develop literacy and language acquisition in English and Spanish. And for us, Spanish has a lot of different regionalisms or accents, depending on where you come from in terms of Latin America or Spain. And so really also being equitable and welcoming of all of those accents or regionalisms that might go with the language. So those are kind of our three big goals. And what that means for our program now is that we're currently offering dual language kindergarten through seventh grade. We are a two-way dual language immersion program. So that means we have students who are starting the program that might be English speakers. And we have students that are starting the program that might be Spanish speakers. And our classrooms are made up of a 50/50 split between the two languages. So we really want to start with an equal mix of both English peer models and Spanish peer models. And then in our kindergarten, we start with 80% of that learning in Spanish and 20% in English. And again, that's really to be able to promote the Spanish language and the transfer that occurs from Spanish to English for our students acquiring languages. Students are learning 50% in each language by fourth grade. So by eighth grade, we really are looking for language proficiency in both languages in any subject. So literacy happens in both languages every day. That's got to be like the most critical component of our program. Students need to be learning in both English and Spanish every day. And then we have a content and language allocation that we actually just refined this last year in January. So this plan articulates really what subject matter and what language each grade level will be teaching in to create some vertical alignment across our system. And then looking forward to our future, and next year, we're adding eighth grade at Mountain View. So we'll have our first group of eighth graders going through the dual program. We'll also be adding two dual language literacy teachers at Mountain View Middle School, which will bring our total number of dual language teachers in the district up to 16. We are also planning for what dual language looks like at NHS and what our, again, language content and allocation plan might be for that in terms of what is the content area we're going to teach in English and what are the content areas we're going to teach in Spanish and what type of course offerings we might have, as well as considering the foreign language requirement and how that plays into the dual language program for students who've been acquiring both languages already since kindergarten. As we continue to add grades, it's really important that we continue to have that vertical alignment. So again, what languages are teachers utilizing in each subject and curriculum that continues to build and creates that congruency? And then assessment alignment in both languages. When we were kind of in infancy in the program, we really focused on building Spanish literacy first and then bringing in English literacy. So we're at a place now where we're really trying to balance both languages and making sure that we have data in both languages. And so we've, we are working on that piece as well. And then ongoing professional development in biliteracy. So this is kind of where we're at in terms of our next steps. And we also offer a biliteracy seal for students to be able to add to their diploma that can show their proficiency in both English and Spanish, which is really exciting to be able to offer, which was also in our dual language plan initially. So it's an informal goal that we have for all of our students to be able to attain by the time they graduate our program. I know I threw a lot at you. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen for a minute here and check in and see where our student guests are at and if they're here yet or if we want to take a moment for some questions while we wait for them to arrive.
They are all here.
They are all here, awesome. So I'm going to introduce Antonio Peña. Antonio Peña Naya is our dual language teacher at Mountain View Middle School. He's currently teaching sixth grade and seventh grade dual language, Spanish literacy. And he is going to introduce students he brought with him this evening.
Thank you, Gillian, and thank you, everyone, for giving us the opportunity today to speak to you. I'm very excited and I know that the students are really, really excited as well. Before I introduce them, I wanted to share a little bit about myself as well. So like Gillian said, my name is Antonio Peña and I am the dual language teacher at Mountain View Middle School. I am also about to graduate 19 more days from Lynnfield University, where I'm double majoring in Spanish literature and secondary education with an ESL and ELA endorsement. I attended the Newbury School District and graduated in 2017. Unfortunately, when I was there, the dual language program was not offered. Growing up, I was never able to have a teacher that looked like me, that spoke like me, that went through the same obstacles that I did. It was hard for me to connect with them. And I was surviving a system that was not created for someone who looked like me. Now, as an educator, I am able to create a more equitable environment where students feel welcomed, where they can use their entire language repertoire. Yes, that actually means mixing the languages up, so we do Spanglish in class. And also to dream and accomplish any goals that the students might have. This way, they will ultimately thrive in their educational career and be bilingual, bicultural and biliterate citizens in a multilingual and multicultural world. I am excited to continue the important work to make our dual language program as successful as it can be. And I look forward to working with every single one of you in this, in this journey together. And now I would like to introduce the students from the dual language program. So first, we will, I will like to present Noilani Diaz. Noilani, if you could, please turn on your camera and your microphone. Whenever you're ready, Noilani. I think your microphone's not working. While Noilani is trying to fix her microphone, let's go over with Emmanuel. Emmanuel Alvarado is a seventh grader at Mountain View.
Hi. Do I present?
Yes, go ahead, Emmanuel.
My name is Emmanuel Alvarado Romero. I'm in seventh grade. My experience has been good because, my experience has been good because being a student in the dual language program has given me self-confidence. Because Spanish is my first language because we speak it at home. And when I started going to school, almost everything was in English and I was not feeling well. But the dual language program has given me English and my language Spanish and gave me confidence. Some positive things that I have, I, that I have experienced is the help that knowing both languages has given me. Another is that the teachers have helped me grow as a bilingual student. The dual language program has helped me to communicate with my relatives in Mexico. Also, something positive is that I can communicate with people who speak English. The benefits of being a bilingual student is that it helps you communicate with people who speak a different language than you. Another reason is that you can earn more money for knowing two languages and it gives you more opportunities. Finally, it is a benefit to be a bilingual student because you can help families and people who only speak one language. For example, a family that just came from Mexico and does not understand English, you can help them because you know their language and you can translate to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmanuel. Noilani, it will be right back. She's trying to fix her microphone. In the meantime, Christopher, Christopher Cervantes.
Hello, my name is Christopher Cervantes Martinez. I am currently in seventh grade. My experience has been good due to I can speak, I can read, and I can understand English and Spanish. Some of the positive things is that when someone doesn't know English or like Emmanuel said, when someone comes over like from Mexico and they don't know English or like you just see someone in the store that doesn't know English. And like, due to I'm in bilingual program, I can help them out. I'm helping, help them out, um, translate, help them out. So so they can so they can understand English. Some of the, oh, some benefits are that you have more opportunities to go ahead. Due, due to you can speak Spanish and English. Um, you understand both languages and more jobs will open because you'll speak English and Spanish. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christopher, and Noilani.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. One sec. Hi, my name is Noalani Diaz and I'm in the seventh grade dual language program. So far, my experience with the program has been great. The dual language program has been like a family to me. All the teachers and staff that have worked with us have been really nice. Some positive, some positive things I've experienced with the program is how being a part of the dual language group is like being in a small community where we all know each other and get along. Benefit of being a bilingual is that you can speak two different languages, which can give you more career opportunities. And you can also communicate with other people that speak that same language. Being bilingual is an important part of who I am because it is part of my culture. I'm thankful to be a student in the school district that values and nurtures my language.
Thank you, Noilani.
Hey, thank you, Antonio and Emmanuel and Christopher and Noalani. I really appreciate you sharing this evening your experience in dual language and coming to a board meeting as seventh graders. That's awesome. Congratulations to all of you. We are really proud of your accomplishments. And at this point, I am not sure how we're doing on time, but we are in a place where we can take questions.
Yeah, there's plenty of time for questions from the board. Does anyone have questions?
How many students are you serving?
That's a great question. So at the elementary level, follow me back up and say at the middle school level, we currently have two grades. There are approximately 70 students at the middle school level. And then at the elementary level, we have approximately 50 students at each grade level. So we've got about 300 students, give or take a little at Edwards. So we're nearing close to 400. By the time the program is at capacity, there will be quite a few students. And the majority of our students who are working on acquiring language and becoming bilingual are enrolling in our dual program. And so that's really exciting to see the difference that will make for them and the opportunities that it creates for all of our students.
Thank you.
How long is the, how much a part of the day does it take up? Are they there all day?
Yes, so the dual language program is, is their experience at school. So in kindergarten, kindergartners will spend 80% of their time in Spanish and 20% of their time in English. And then by fourth grade, it's 50/50. So 50% of the students' time will be in English and 50% of the students' time will be in Spanish. And we try to like to really focus the schedules on blocking that so students aren't having to transition back and forth between language. That's pretty taxing on their brains as they're trying to also acquire that content knowledge. So in the ideal world, that looks like one language in the morning and one language in the afternoon, once you get to that 50/50 point.
So they're, I mean, they're doing it from the time they get there until the time they go home?
Yes.
And so 300 students at Edwards, that's, that's probably not quite half.
Um, well, they have, Edwards is K5 now. So we have two classrooms at every grade level. So it's where, I think for the most part, it's right about half or just under.
Okay, thank you.
Same number of classrooms, with the exception of our experiences with COVID this year, with those class sizes kind of shifting and moving around.
And the dual program is open to, to everyone in this district, right?
Yes, so in the dual program, if you have, if you are a student that's already in the program and you have a sibling that might be an incoming kinder, we do allow siblings preference in terms of entering the program. And then for students who might not have a sibling already in the program, we do a lottery system for that. And so we do oftentimes have wait lists for students waiting to enter the program because of how much interest we have. And then in terms of students entering after kindergarten, we, we tend to cap that at first grade, beyond first grade, unless a student is a newcomer coming from another country, that's a Spanish speaking country. We, or coming from another school district that has a dual language program, we generally don't have students enter just because of the language acquisition that's already occurred. So really, the only time you can enter is in kindergarten until about first grade. Or if you're a student that's a newcomer from a country that's Spanish speaking or in a dual language program.
I want to thank our students, Emmanuel, Christopher and Noalani for coming. I, you know, anytime students can come before the board and it's probably the highlight of that meeting. It's really great to see students' faces. And Antonio, thank you for coming as well. So Gillian, I had a more specific question around that chart that you showed with all the rainbow of graphs. Just a couple, what does NCE stand for? It was on both the side and then at the top as well.
So that's kind of like the national percentile equivalent of how students perform at each grade level.
Okay, so obviously, and thank you for explaining the 50% dash mark and the two green lines was great.
There's a lot of action happening on that chart.
Yeah, that was a good chart though. So we know that there's not enough space for all kids that would like to participate in this, right? And so there are English language learners that are getting that pullout and that's that red line at the bottom that we know is maybe not the best way to reach kids. You know, pie in the sky, your professional opinion, what, what would you best case scenario want to do for serving all of those other kids that are English language learners but aren't able to be in the dual program?
Well, I was gonna say, I think there's two solutions. Expand the dual language program, but then also immediately, like work that we're working on right now is shifting our English language development model to co-teaching. So what that looks like is instead of pulling students out of their grade level classroom, we're going to have our English language development specialists push into the classroom and collaborate with their classroom teacher to create learning experiences where they can acquire language using their grade level content. So oftentimes, when you have a pullout model, sometimes language can be developed and we call it being developed in isolation. So students are acquiring language, but when they transition back into their classroom and they're learning something that might have some rigorous academic language, they don't necessarily have guidance on how to apply the language they've acquired, right? So students can become English language proficient, but then they have all of the academic content tasks that they need to then apply the language to. So by supporting students in their classroom, A, we're creating equity in terms of access. They're not being pulled out of class every day to receive language development instruction. They're not being pulled out of class every day to receive language development instruction. They're getting that in their class, so they're also not missing any opportunities within the classroom itself. And then they're able to apply that language that they are developing into the content because that's where they're learning it. So that's kind of the two prongs that we are um, shifting to and, and exploring. And with a little bit of co-teaching happening this year at the secondary level and it, at all of our schools and pockets. Um, and some co-teaching happening at Edwards and then some of the elementary schools. Um, Joanne Austin is working on a little bit of co-teaching. So we're having um, teachers try it out, experiment with it. We are providing professional development in terms of teaching and that collaboration piece um, moving forward into the rest of this year and next year. And that will be our shift in terms of our English language development model.
I have a question. Uh, as a language specialist, um, a couple of years ago at the OSBA conference, Eagle Point School District, um, said the best thing they ever did, this would be over 13 and a half years ago now, but it took them 12 years to fix their attendance program. They felt like the, the superintendent on down through their admin and teachers felt like if they could fix that, they could uh, solve their main issues about bringing kids up to speed and everything. And it worked. They had all the stats. They became one of the top performing schools in the state, uh, school districts in the state. My question was, is more like, like with Antonio and stuff, I remember Antonio from school, by the way, is uh, he was very polite, uh, was if you are, if we started this at K or first grade for all of our kids and you've perfect this ability to go back into the classroom, how would our kids come out, do you think, after 12 years, if they graduated Newburgh High School and they had this ability to uh, have a great mix of a program? Do you think they could come out and be bilingual?
I, I think that's a great question, Dave, that we're actually gathering data on right now. Um, you know, one of the drawbacks of having the COVID experience that we've had this year is we had some gaps in some of our data. Um, but that is one area where we've definitely seen some increase and I'll be looking forward to being able to share some more consistent data with you. Um, especially as we move into next year and that, that particular impact. Because I agree that being able to offer equitable opportunities in terms of instruction and, and um, acquiring language and not having students miss their learning. Really will may probably make a big difference in not only their attendance, but their engagement in the classroom. And feeling like a part of a community where they deserve to be. And right now, we're pulling them out and pulling them away. So I think that is an important shift that I would expect to see a change in attendance with.
Just, just to add on that, I just think too, for the staff members, to have people come to their classroom that are in expertise in that second language, over that period of time, our staff members would also grow, not only in, in the language, it'd also grow in the ability to do what Antonio spoke to. Um, to make it seem like it would be uh, more around, well-rounded fitting for everybody. Our staff would learn that kind of, just because they're kind of in it too. So I don't mean to go on so long.
Dave, I think that's one of the most, um, one of the benefits of the models, right, is that we're elevating everyone. So our classroom teachers get the benefit of working with a language specialist. Our language specialists get the benefit of working with our classroom teachers and content. So it, it really is a great opportunity for everyone. I look forward to being able to see some improvements in our um, assessment and attendance rates.
Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, one of the things that's, I've been curious about, since everybody has to get in at the bottom, you can't kind of come in from the side very well. That the classes would generally get smaller because you lose students, move away and stuff. Is that happening to us? And I mean, what percentage of the original group is still with us, for example?
So at the beginning of the dual language program, that first year we started in kindergarten, we started with two classrooms to ensure that we would be able to have capacity to continue to offer the program by the time they get to eighth grade. Um, this year currently, we've got just about 30 students in seventh grade. Um, just under 40 in sixth grade. And as we are really refining our program and, and building it. And now that it's not, it's not a new grade level every single year. I mean, I think that's what I need to say the most about our students um, that are with us tonight is every year is the first year for them. And so now that we've got some capacity and we're building our program, uh, I really do see that as one area that's definite opportunity for us in the future. We are seeing our enrollments um, continue to grow and we are losing less students.
So can you give me a, a, a idea of the scale? Like I said, the percentage of originals that are still with us and?
So I mean, I think that very first class, um, they're right about 30 and we had just under 50 in that first class, 50 students, um, two classrooms. So probably at 60% with our seventh graders and then a little more with our uh, sixth graders and our fifth graders. Right now, the classes are still pretty equal. Um, we're looking at most of the kids moving, moving into dual language as sixth graders.
I would guess, I would guess, I would guess these kids out on the point might be the ones that would attrit, if that's a, if that's a verb, attrit the most. Um, uh, but you know, uh, well, I guess I'm wondering it, when they moved into second, secondary level, was there any increase in the loss? Did we lose another chunk or how, how was it pretty much everybody uh, as normal continuing?
Uh, the first year, we had some attrition. Some students chose to go to their neighborhood schools. I think that's the challenge with some of our students that are in the beginning um, years of our dual program is that they have siblings in other buildings. So some families needed to make the decision as students moved into middle school. Um, for example, our seventh graders, right, that might have eighth grade siblings. Do I split my students and have one go to Mount View and one go to CV or do they go to both places? So I think we may have saw three to five students, um, maybe choose to, to move to CV due to that being their neighborhood school. Right now, we're looking at only one or two students not choosing to continue um, as we move into their sixth grade year. So I think that's, it's decreasing, especially as the program is being built out each year. And like I said, I think that our seventh graders, every year was the first year, first um, hire for most of our teachers. And so everything was continuing to be new and new and new. And now we've got some capacity built with that. And I think that continues to support um, our students staying in the program and being able to offer really rich experiences to all of our students.
Yeah, we probably should do some kind of recognition when these pioneers graduate because they've broken trail for a lot of people. Thank you. That's all my questions.
As the secondary students advance, will they have um, this dual language possibility in electives? Or how do you, how do they deal with electives at the middle school?
Right now, our electives are in English, but I know that the dual language teachers that we have here tonight, Antonio and we have uh, Olivia Serna, who is our dual language teacher for science. Um, and then obviously Terry and Cass, we've all been talking about how do we provide some elective experience in um, both languages, English and Spanish, and some ideas that we've gotten from some recent professional development around that. And the high school is exploring the same thing. So right now, the high school is really looking at what our, our offering is going to be and in which language. Um, and then planning for making those strategic hires as we build out our program. So that high school part is really still being built out and the middle school, we're going to continue to look at adding programming.
Uh, so I had a quick question on data. Um, that chart that you showed at the beginning of your presentation, that is from a nationwide study, I gather. Do we have any similar data for the kids who are going through our own program? Because I didn't see any of that in the presentation.
So that's what I was kind of looking for in terms of uh, the assessment data I would like to be able to share with you. We have some gaps in our smarter balance data, so we don't have the complete picture for the kids in middle school right now, the last, um, last year specifically. And then um, what it might look like this year in terms of which assessments are going to be administered and the participation. So we're missing two years of assessment data and that's one piece I'd really like to be able to see. So as this first group closes into eighth grade, being able to look at that trajectory. Because between year five and seven is really where you want to see um, that gap close. And so I, I kind of feel like I'm missing the data um, due to the things that have just been happening in our world recently. I can say for students who are in our dual language program, they are acquiring um, language proficiency at a faster rate than students who are in our traditional um, service model in terms of the pullout class. But I think really looking at our, how that, how does that relate to content? Is that next step in terms of what I'd like to share with you with assessment results hopefully next year.
And when you say they're acquiring it faster, you're basing that on testing?
Yes. So our English language proficiency assessment, the ALPA, we administer that, that's a state assessment that we um, have students take each year. And that data um, typically shows about a 10% proficiency rate in students each year.
Would it be possible to see that data and the data for the students who aren't in the program?
Yep, I can definitely get that for you.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Antonio, muchas gracias por estar con nosotros esta noche. Y a los estudiantes, muchas gracias también por venir a hablar con la mesa directiva. Sé que no es fácil venir a estos tipos de reuniones, pero ustedes sigan viniendo, sigan usando su voz. Porque es muy importante que nosotros como mesa directiva los escuchemos. Sus padres deben de estar muy orgullosos al igual que ustedes y sigan luchando por lo que quieren.
Any other questions for Jillian or Antonio? Okay, thank you for your time and especially to the students for coming out at eight o'clock on a Tuesday night to talk to the board. We really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Okay, let's transition into some old business. We've got our school start time slash block schedule proposal. And I don't know, Joe, do you want to speak a little bit to the block schedule situation or would you prefer to have that after?
Uh, I think we'll keep those separate. I can give you a quick update on those, but uh, I think we should probably stick with the school start time. I can answer questions on those if you want. I also have the slides from last time with a few adjustments if you want them. And if not, we can just move ahead because I think it would be all the same thing that we talked about before. So if you want to launch right in, um, you can go ahead with that.
Okay, great. So um, after the ad hoc committee, the start time ad hoc committee recommended um, changes for the start time. Um, it came before the board in January and we now are at a point where it has been uh, tabled from last meeting and it's on our agenda again. And I, I do know that I think probably every board member has some things to talk about in this regard. Um, so if the board is comfortable with it, I'd like to kind of go along like we do with board comments, at least in the beginning, so that everybody has a chance to speak. Uh, is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, would anybody like to start us off?
I, I have a question. I'll use my turn to ask the question. Um, one of the things that came out of the last meeting was the thought that it would be easier for us to work out uh, maybe some of the start times if we knew where the block part was going. So putting it at the end leaves it after our discussion and I, it's got information that I need, I might need to vote depending on the nature of that information. So that's my only point right now.
So let me just talk to that one quickly because I don't want that to get, to get stuck. We actually talked about it a little bit last time. Um, one of the things that, that uh, was important from uh, our school admin teams is that we don't couple the two of them together. Because as we look at the overall schedule, so in a, in a block schedules, for instance, we may be using that entire amount of time still. It's because they're trying to put in things like uh, advisory uh, and some other kind of minutes. And so they, they may, or there may or may not be a savings. So we should not uh, assume that there'll be a savings in time on the backend of that until they've completed the work of developing that schedule. So um, I'm actually glad you asked that. I should have thought that, about that beforehand. But it's important to look at the, the start and end times as they are now. There are lots of things at play that could actually change those times, um, you know, in the next little while. So there, it's important to kind of look at the times as they are now. Um, and not try to tie them with the block schedule because there may or may not be a time savings at the end of the day. Um, due to how we develop the block schedule. So um, I think we should look at those as, as they are from the start time, uh, start and end times as we presented them before.
And that answered your question wrong? Were you concerned? Okay. Um, anybody else like to, to go and share their thoughts? Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, you know, I think that this is the, the right change to make and I would really like to see it happen. I don't feel like it would be fair for me to support making this change since I'm stepping away uh, from the board work and I won't be here to uh, kind of monitor and oversee that implementation. Uh, so I won't vote for it, but I, I do want to uh, encourage the board to uh, really consider it. And particularly, my main concern with implementation is that we stick with it if, if you decide as a board to make that change. I think the most disruptive thing for the system would be to make this change and then get a year or two into it and go back to uh, the original schedule. I think that would be more disruptive than making no change. Uh, and the other thing, I forwarded on an email from Director Brown to Greg. I've asked him to put that into the, the minutes for this meeting. Uh, Dave had sent out an email uh, strongly advocating for his position on this. Uh, you know, my perception is that that's deliberation that should happen in a public meeting, not uh, behind closed doors. So I've asked for uh, Greg to put that into the minute so that our community can, you know, see the deliberations that go into our decision making.
All right. Rebecca, do you have any thoughts to share?
Well, I, I do want to address what Drew said about the um, the after-school care. And I know I, I, I've raised the question and I'd like Joe to, um, I mean, I, I feel we could offer homework clubs or something to accommodate these students that, that need, need care until someone picks them up. And so I would, I would want to advocate for that. And um, and so I, I would support the, the eight, eight o'clock start for the elementary and then eight forty-five start for the secondary. I think that's a good compromise to what the ad hoc committee staff did. And there's been talk that we, we haven't discussed this in a work session, but we did have the, the advert, ad hoc committee met three, four times. We did meet uh, with a, with the parents or the community and the In, the Spanish speaking community. And we, I also went to, to Mountain View Middle School and spoke on this and to the Latinx parents meeting and spoke on this. And we've talked about this since January. So um, I feel we've, we've really put in time and, and energy on, on this. And it won't make everybody, everybody happy, but I think this, this is what most of the parents want. And, and the students have said so too. So that's why I'm supporting this.
I'll go next if it's okay. Um, I just want to say, uh, you know, I, I totally acknowledge, you know, um, Drew's uh, perspective uh, and the concerns he's bringing before us. I'm absolutely committed uh, to finding solutions. I'm not under any um, illusions that problems won't arise for families out of this. I think more families will be helped by it than hurt by it, but I am committed to finding solutions to mitigate any negative consequences. That said, uh, the scientific and medical evidence uh, to support this change is overwhelming. Uh, making this change according to the CDC, the American Medical Association, uh, the American Psychological Association and many other uh, medical advocacy organizations are that this change will improve student performance, student attendance, students' mental health, reduce uh, drug and alcohol abuse, reduce obesity, improve performance in sports, improve uh, participation in sports and um, other positive effects that I'm sure I'm forgetting that are listed in our report. So to me, uh, this is the right move for us to make for students, for our families. It's overwhelmingly supported by our community. Our data has shown that. Uh, and I would ask for everyone to support it with their vote. Thank you.
Dave, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I really would. You guys got my email and I'm happy to have that put in a minute because none of you guys have been at the high school except Rebecca and you are going to hurt the high school tremendously with this. They 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 put down what they've had. We have not spoken to that staff enough. You have the principal, the main principal from Mountain View Middle School, the principal from Newburgh High School, the athletic director from Newburgh High School. My estimation is they have about 80 years of service to education. Over half of that would be an administrative work. And they have all three said that this does not work for secondary education, especially the high school. Those are the type of people I would listen to. We have not brought them into a school board meeting and at least had this conversation. I get that there's all over the place that there's not going to be everybody happy on this. I raised my kids through here from K through 12th grade. And I get it how it would affect everybody at different ages, but we're asking the grade schools not to move their times out much. But we're asking the high school and the middle schools to change theirs drastically. These kids getting out at three forty, three forty five in the afternoon is going to be a tremendous burden. Do you guys realize how many things start at four o'clock? Practices start at three o'clock, not just sports, but all the other things that high schoolers are have such more of a complex type schedule. And I'm just saying, we should bring these veteran administrator teachers to a board meeting and at least question the heck out of them. And then if we still feel like we want to vote this way, I get the science. I get the fact that we've talked to some people, but we haven't talked to everybody. And I'm I'm going to ask Dr. Joe, have you sat down and spoke with these principals and Newburgh High School staff in detail about this? Because we're making a big mistake for the high school. And however bad we want this because we don't want to disrupt the younger kids. We are really going to make this hard for a lot of people. I've talked to most of the coaches in Newburgh High School. And they're just like, you have to kid me, this is going to be so difficult. We're making this hard on a lot of people, not just kids, but we're talking about staff after school having to pick up their kids and what they're going to do. Now they're not getting home until not six o'clock from a practice, seven, seven thirty with their families. So I get Brian, what you said about we're not going to be able to make everybody happy. I get where the science is at. But we don't spend any time talking about what our kids are doing late in the evenings. And we're not trying to educate parents on the fact that these kids are on screen time with phones and computers and TVs in their bedrooms. Staying up until midnight, one o'clock doing stuff, not homework necessarily, but other things. And but we never talk about that that could help kids wake up a little bit earlier. But the high school has come back and said eight thirty. If we went to the the one, I believe it was a seven forty five, not ideal for grade school. But they're moving a little bit still, whereas then we're saying the high school eight thirty, you guys. But we're going so late on this. This is going to be something that 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 we're really making this super difficult on them. I'd rather not see us make any changes at all and study this more. Because not everybody in the community feels this way. We've talked to certain people that we've talked to and students and people have called into the to the district staff meetings or the board meetings. But we have by far and away not talked to everybody. And I get it the ways people support this. I mean, everybody'd like to start their day at nine o'clock. But I know how this is going to vote. I'm just telling you, it's it's I would certainly like to sit down with you guys, my fellow board members. With those three administrators, Terry McGillic, Tim Burke, Tammy Einren. And have them look us in the eye and let's have this conversation at least once before we just make this vote and go. Because these are people that are in the school, have been in the school, spent their entire career in the school. And they have a lot more knowledge about this than we do and in our current roles. And I I I just can't say any more passionately than that. I don't think we've really talked to everybody, especially at the secondary level. And we're letting them down.
Joe, would you like to speak about the engagement that you've had on the secondary level, if any?
Sure. Yeah, I spoke with all of them. You know, they certainly preferred eight thirty over eight forty five. And on the other side of that, our Linch folks thought seven forty five was early, too early. What happens in our elementary schools is actually people drop their kids off about a half hour before. That puts our elementary school kids, you know, on the bus really, really early. Even if they're dropping off at that time, they could be on the bus before seven AM. And so I think there's just there's never I think you actually said it, Dave. Nobody's going to be happy on either side. I coached a RC sport for many years. My practice started at five. Because we, you know, had to organize our things and we were done at seven. And so I think there are ways to look at doing them differently. I understand that it sounds it sounds super late, but I did actually speak with them. They didn't like the eight forty five time. But at the same time, if we look at the whole district, I think that that's probably an important piece to do. It's I I think when you go into something like this, anytime you do a major change of this, it changes everybody's family routine. But there are some important aspects to it. I think that you guys have all spoken to them. I brought together what I thought was a good middle of the road from the from the nine o'clock recommendation from the ad hoc committee. And shot somewhere in the middle of that. So I understand there's a, you know, a lot of this, but I I did speak with them. I'm not sure that they agreed with me and my assessment at the same time. I was trying to move this ball forward a little bit and bring it back to you to to consider. So you know, it's the eight forty five, I think, is five minutes later than a couple of the districts that I brought up in the presentation last time. And it's 15 minutes later than several other districts that started eight thirty. It is 15 minutes. So I just I I want to be clear that yes, I did speak with them. Do we ask all staff all the way through? No, we didn't do a specific staffing. Did we ask every single family after? Could you come up with this? No. But we also did start talking about this in January and in February. I myself have been now presented three times on this. And so we've taken in whatever kind of data we've gotten. I think we've gotten, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, what I think we've gotten about four dozen emails total. And so it's, you know, it's it's not a huge amount of data coming back from us that way. I think we could, you know, continue to to survey to death, but I think that's something that you guys should discuss. You know, figure out where you want to go with this. Do you want to look at, you know, delaying the the vote for a year? We can certainly talk about that. Either way, whatever we do, we're going to have to figure out solutions for supporting our community. And I think that that's something that we discovered even more during this pandemic. About the availability of childcare, that's what we've talked about the project Oasis, you know, we just, we don't have that level of availability. We've got to work on some things regardless of the start time. If it's after school, great. If it's before school, also great. There are some things we have to do to to do some additional supports and partner with additional groups that can help us. Because we don't have a lot of options for those. But that's, you know, whatever time that we land on, we'll adjust the system to make it work for that time. I don't think any of these are too far out of bounds. And I think bringing it back to eight forty five from nine was probably what we should have done. And and, you know, if we are able to adjust with our busing and things, and maybe we'll can shorten that forty five minutes down. But, you know, right now, that's where we are. And anyway, I'll just keep rambling, but that's kind of where we are most.
Thank you. Sorry. Inez, do you have any thoughts or anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I mean, I've shared my my thoughts before, since we have been talking about this for a while. And to a comment that was made about getting to everybody, are we talking to everybody even with elections and votes? You know, not everybody is eligible to vote for different reasons, and yet they are a part of our community. So I'm ready to make a vote on this. I don't want to push it to next year. I know implementation will be hard. And I'm willing and I'm committed to figuring out what it will take for us to find the funding to provide that childcare support while the secondary gets out and then picks up siblings. But I'm willing and committed to finding ways to make this happen because it is something that I care about and is important to me. But I also, I mean, to this day, I am not a morning person. I work better at night. I mean, right now I'm in Mexico and it is ten twenty one. And, you know, this works fine for me, but I can't be up for seven thirty, eight in the morning meeting. So I know how important it is to me. I know how important it is to our students. And I'm ready to move forward on this.
Yeah, I really kind of went back and looked at our entire process that we've been on for the start time specifically. And it started in a conversation in August, an August board meeting. And that was the formation of our two ad hoc committees. September was the first report to the board from the start time committee. The start time committee report was delivered in January. At that point, we decided we needed more community input. So we spent from January until now, April, having time and having conversation and reaching out. I know I personally put it on social media, please reach out to the board. Here's the email address. And in the last probably like three to four weeks, we did get quite a few emails. I think we probably got around two dozen. And I feel in addition to everything that the start time committee did and everything that Joe has done. And I really feel like we have, as one board member, I have a fairly clear picture on this. And I think anytime there's change to a system, we have to be really conscious of who it's affecting and how to support those people. And this is kind of an interesting situation because as board members, we're not involved in the operation, right? We're not involved with the implementation of it. And what we can do is support Joe and his efforts to do that. And I've had conversations with Joe, you know, and if Joe was saying this is too much, the system cannot handle this, there's no way we can get equitable childcare for students. Or if he was throwing up any red flags, it would it would change my my viewpoint on this a lot. But I think having that change to just after school start, or I'm sorry, after school care versus before and after. Really potentially opens up a lot of opportunities for the after school enrichments we've been talking about for years. We know our kids need more after school activities and more enrichment. And I think this would be a great way to get a lot of kids in our system potentially having that opportunity. And I also think, you know, I hear the concerns around the athletic schedule. We know that kids who participate in after school activities and jobs can really be academically enriched by those experiences. I think what I go back to is looking around us. I looked up our conference league today. I'll be honest, I didn't know what it was, but now I do. The six A three Pacific Conference. And every single high school in our conference gets out between three twenty and three thirty. Every single one. Newark is the only high school that gets out at two forty or did prior when we were having in person learning. So I do not think that this change is going to drastically affect our overall ability for our kids to participate in sports. Because it will be in line with other schools around us. Any other questions before I open it up for a motion?
Yeah, Brandy, I just had one comment. I just think something at this magnitude that we did not have. One work session or executive session is something that we need to look at in the future when it's this big. We didn't have one. We've
We can't have an executive session for this. It's it's not legal, but I hear you. I hear what you're saying, feeling that there hasn't been enough conversation.
We should have scheduled somewhere in there though. And then I think before we have this kind of come up again. That again, getting into the nitty gritty of of staff, I don't think, you know, staff has gotten enough here. And 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 just put an hour of the board meeting to to something like this because this is a this is a big one. That's this is my last comment.
Well, to be fair, Dave, I mean, we sort of as a board decided to delegate that work to the ad hoc committee. That's why we formed it. So that all of that, what you're talking about was done in the ad hoc committee. And we we did our best to listen to all the voices that we could, that we could get to come and speak to us. And we could get to submit comments and poll results. And there are of course people who are against it. There's anything you do, you're going to have people who who see the flaws in it more than they see the benefits. But for me, I think the benefits of this change outweigh the challenges that it will present. I got out of school and in my high school, I got out at three thirty. That's 10 minutes earlier than our students will be getting out here. And I was able to participate in sports and after school activities and work after school. So it's 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 not the sky is falling. It really isn't. We're we will have challenges and we will find solutions to those challenges. But we I we've been talking about this for so long and we've listened to so many people and done everything we could to collect input. And I get that there are people who are saying it's the wrong decision. I get that. But that's the nature of making a difficult decision is there's always going to be people who disagree with you. Point of order, Brandy, I previously had a motion that was seconded by Director Pena. Can I ask unanimous consent to revive that resolution? Or that motion to accept the superintendent's proposal?
Can you, since I did read the minutes, but I wasn't here last meeting, can you tell me what that motion was? Was it to table it?
Uh, no, I made the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations and then we did a subsequent motion to table that motion. So I would like to revive that motion.
So I think the proper motion is to take it off the table, but we could do that by unanimous consent if there's no objection.
The packet has the language from Brian's motion from last meeting.
Yeah, so we take that motion off the table if everybody agrees, or if we have to, we can vote on taking it off the table. And then we could discuss the motion itself. Yes.
I request unanimous consent to take motion seventy one off the table.
I second.
You don't have to.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Let's just vote all those in favor of taking it off the table.
Sure.
Okay, it does not pass unanimously. So point of order, what does that mean, Ron?
Well, we but what we've just done is we've moved to take it off the table. So we voted and we you've got five or six yes votes. You need to see if you have no votes.
Yes. So are there any no votes? And abstentions? Okay, so one abstention passes six to one. Okay, vote is off.
Yeah, it's off the table so we could talk.
It's off the table, so it's on the table.
It's it's totally backwards the way they express it.
Would anybody, is anyone feeling called to make a motion at this point?
We don't, we have a motion on the board. The next thing we get, we could discuss it until we were done discussing and then we'd vote on that motion.
Could we hear from Ron? He just had a question. But he didn't express what he felt about the since everyone else.
Let's put Ron on the spot.
This is unprecedented that you'd have to ask me before I'd say something. In the minutes, I assume, Greg or Jen, whoever's doing that today. Well, I have been dithering about this. Dithering is probably understating it because it's not just me dithering. I'm just thinking about it. The main hesitation I have right now about voting on it is that is, I think, a version of Dave's point, I think they overstated a little bit, but I think he's got a point there that it was been, it would have been good for us to make sure that we heard from key key leaders in the secondary level. And maybe good to have surveyed the entire employee group. We didn't do that. I think it's not the same to say you have representatives on the committee. That's not the same as hearing from the entire group. We didn't specifically invite Tammy and the other leaders in the high school or the middle schools to come. They were always able to come. I don't know why they wouldn't have come. I don't think there was any barrier to them coming. I think that's an imperfection. If we did it again, we might do better. I'm what what Joe just said about, you know, his reaction to it, he has not tried to influence our conversation more than trying to, you know, work on some alternatives. He hasn't told us where he'd like us to vote. I think that's fine. But I'm reading from what he said that his his analysis of the situation is that there shouldn't be insuperable hurdles from it. And that weighs heavily with me. I have I have one more clarification is if somebody could tell me if we started eight forty five, when the school day exactly would end, that would help me. I don't have, I was trying to find it when somebody called me to speak, my old minutes and my own notes from last time, but I couldn't find it. So.
Three forty for secondary.
Three forty.
And then with an eight AM start time for elementary, it would end at two thirty five.
Yeah, so that's an hour of a gap. I've heard from several members of the board, their commitment to find solutions that will work for families so that this is a game for as many and as little loss as possible for everybody. I would share that commitment, assuming I'm reelected. And and I'm going to And, uh, and I'm, I'm going to end up voting for this, uh, even though. Even though I suspect that there will be a significant portion of the student body will just stay up later. I think we need to give them a chance and, uh, we have puzzled over why our secondary students don't do as well as elementary students in our district as, as a historical. Pattern. And I'm willing to try lots of things to try to fix that. And this is an attempt to try to fix that.
Okay. So to clarify, the motion on the floor is a elementary start time of eight AM and a secondary start time of eight forty five. Is that correct? Everybody's on the same page with that. Okay. So there is a motion. And there was a second at some point. Hopefully it was the right one in the right spot. Making sure we're doing the same page. Do we have further discussion on this? Okay. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. So all those in favor of an eight AM elementary, eight forty five high school, please raise your hand. Okay. All those opposed? And abstaining. Okay. So we had Director Woodworth abstain, Director Brown vote in opposition and the motion passes five to two.
Five to one.
Five to one. Thank you. Sorry, Bob. I don't want to not count you. Okay. Thank you. I think that was a robust discussion. From everybody. All right. So we're about three minutes behind schedule. Let's push it five minute break till eight thirty eight.
I don't know.
You need to go up like that. Let me go see what. Will it show you now?
I don't know. Okay.
Hi Jean, thanks for helping. You can hear him in the background. Oh, you're muted now.
He wants to make sure my head's showing and that cut off.
No, it looks great. Yep.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a lot of people in viewing?
Um, let's see, we've got sixteen.
Great.
Yeah. And I think it's been anywhere from like thirteen to sixteen, which is great. Yeah. Congratulations on the budget committee for the E S D. It's exciting.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm, I've. Took a deep breath and shared it with Jean and he said, what? What more are you doing?
You know, but it'll be a really interesting perspective on the whole E S D. I mean, that's a large service district.
Yeah, yeah. So the first meeting is May sixth.
Right. It will be fascinating. I look forward to hearing about the experience. That's for sure.
Yeah.
We have about one more minute.
All right.
That's Brandy. Can she see your whole head now? Sorry, everybody back.
Yes. Yeah, I got your head.
Okay. She's, she's got my head.
She can hear me?
Yeah.
That's good. All right. Eight thirty eight. I'm going to just talk a little bit, maybe get some people to come back. I'm there screaming. Also, I noticed that some questions popped up in the Q and A. So, um. I, a couple of them are anonymous and one is, um, from Daniel. I'm. Going to go ahead. Let's see if I can put in our chat. I'm going to do panelists and attendees. I'm just going to put in the email. For all board members. So if you have questions or any further, um, comments and would like to reach out to the board, please do that. We, um, unfortunately don't answer questions during board meetings. Um, as they are public business meetings. Okay. Let's see who we missing, we're missing and as and Dave, let's give them one more minute. Okay, Dave's back. Hopefully Nas joins us here any minute. So next up on our agenda, we have our discussion around the superintendent evaluation timeline. As the board members probably remember, it came as a little bit of a surprise to us this year. Um, and kind of felt like we were a little bit behind the eight ball on it. So we really wanted to be more intentional about planning it out. For next year. So. If we look at our packets, um, this is all just information, by the way. So we're going to talk about it more in next meeting. And vote and to set up the actual timeline. So this is just going to be for conversation and information. So let's see, I think it's page thirty nine of our packet. Uh, let me scroll down there really quick. So page thirty nine of the packet has a timeline. So the March, April, May timeline. Is when they suggest setting, um, the tool that you're going to use and setting your timeline. So. That's kind of what we're, we're talking about. For this, at this point. Adopting the standards, which is the value, or a valuation tool, the one that we used last year with, I think it had seven, eight standards. And then the second part, that part two that they're talking about is goals. If as a board, we want to sit down with the superintendent and develop goals specific to, it will be looked at during the evaluation. We do it later. So, um, I guess let's start with the tool. What are some thoughts on, on the superintendent evaluation tool? No thoughts. It's good. We can just say, great. Let's keep going. I thought it went well this year. That was my perspective.
I'd like to hear from Joe, what he thought of using his, uh, how it worked for him to use that format. As a way of structuring our evaluation of him.
But, um, it was actually good to have, uh, very clear descriptors, um, for me. So it helped me and also the tool included some. Uh, examples, which then helped me, uh, focus what I was able to put together to present to you. So, um, I mean, it covers a lot of standards. And, but they're all kind of important. So I, I appreciated the clarity. I think within the tool itself. Uh, around the artifacts and things that were, that were looked for, because then that actually makes it. Helpful for me to narrow the focus of what I'm presenting to you rather than just saying. Here's a year's worth of work. So I was able to kind of categorize and put into each one of these groups. And then again. Using the examples of the artifacts made it far easier for me to put together something that was more usable for you to then evaluate the, the progress.
Was there like anything that you wished was covered in that tool in terms of our? So this is, this isn't relating to specific goals we might've had for a year, but is in general as a general two for evaluation. Was there anything you felt left out?
Uh, no, I mean, it, it covers a pretty wide range of things. I, I think that the, um. This year was very strange because of COVID and so some things we just didn't do. And I, I don't think that that's, I didn't take that as a. As a knock on my performance. It's just something we just didn't do during this year because of how we were doing. How we were doing school and everything else. But, uh, no, I mean, it covers a wide range of things. I don't think there's anything additional that. Um, that we need to put in there. Um, and I think, uh, with more time, if you, if you decide to settle on this sooner than later, then I can actually begin the process of. Putting those documents together now. So as we go through, because we talked about this before, is really it's an evaluation from. When the end of the evaluation happens from the year prior, it's never going to be a, a July one forward, because then it's only a few months, right? So we talked about this other span of time that goes kind of between years. Um, but that allows me to, if, if you settle on something, um, then I am able to begin putting those things together just to keep track of the. Of those items over the year. And then we also can develop the goals and that helps, you know, form that because. You know, like right now, we're in, we had our budget meeting at six PM. So we're developing some budget priorities. If there are things that I need to adjust from a. Budgetary standpoint, depending upon what kind of goals we have, I mean, those, those shifts can be made as well. So. But no, I don't, I don't think anything's missing. And I, I think the clarity was very helpful for me.
Now, one thing that we talked about this year was that with COVID, it didn't feel like it would be effective to try and do a three sixty, uh, evaluation. I would really encourage next year to be a three sixty year. You know, it'll be Joe's next year. Next year he'll be in his third year as superintendent. This is your second full year as superintendent. First.
Well, interim.
Interim.
And then two more. So next year will be the fourth year. Yeah.
Yeah. Next year will be fourth year, third year permanent.
Yes, right.
That, that feels like, you know, enough time to, and then with us being, you know, relatively post COVID. Uh, it feels like it would be, uh, an effective time to bring in that, that full three sixty perspective.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, what you just said, Bob, because. Even as we were hiring for the permanent position, it wasn't like a formal three sixty. Review, but it did feel like that because we did talk to multiple parties involved. And we got to see areas of growth that normally we probably wouldn't see. Um, so yeah, I would be very supportive of doing a three sixty.
We, we did, we had so many, you know, staff administrators, community members say, boy, this feels like a three sixty. Evaluation when we were doing the interim. So yeah, it feels like, feels like good timing to do it again next year.
I think so. Part of this too, that is sort of recommended is the artifacts of evidence and Joe, I really, I think. I would encourage us to use that link kind of system that you did this past year in your evaluation of linking specific. Programs or projects or information to the goals and the vision. I think that really helped. Give us evidence to. The standards, which was super important. What about the suggestion on the OSBA suggestion part about goals? Of, of the board and the superintendent having specific goals for the superintendent in regards to valuation. Where's everybody? What are some thoughts on that?
I think this is a, I, I'd like to explore doing that. Again, this is something we need to talk about with you, Joe. But because this is basically a mutual process. But this is also, I think a way, a tool that the board could use to be more effective in supporting you. And, uh, even giving you. Cover to, to try some experiments or something. If we had some goals. That we've articulated. For the particular year, I think it's going to be, I can imagine this being relatively. Could be a drawn out process because if you ask all seven of us and we each gave two goals, that might end up being fourteen specific goals, which probably too many. So we would have to figure out some way of prioritizing a couple or three or whatever the right number is. But, uh, I think that adding that to this evaluation process and particularly since we're setting it up at the beginning and having a conversation about what this means. Allows us as a board to, will allow us as a board to deliberate on priorities and things that are important. And would allow us to work with Joe to work to, to define a. To find what we'd like to see in a year and help Joe be able to demonstrate at the end of the year that he did what we, or if it didn't, why? Uh, but in general, give him a chance to, yep, this was a goal. This is what you said I should do. And here I did it. And, um. I think that process would help us be more effective in helping. Our, our district be sort of optimal in responding to needs and so forth.
And just to clarify, the suggestion is one to three goals. So it's very shy fourteen.
Try fourteen was too many. So on the three, right?
Maybe I could just interject that one of the issues to think about with goals, I like that we are. Moving this ahead, but we need to clearly define what time period you're doing. Last year you chose to do calendar year twenty twenty. If you do calendar year twenty twenty one, but you don't decide on goals until May or June, then that becomes a difficulty. So. So that's part of the conversation the board should have as far as what timeframe is Joe evaluated on and then what timeframe are those goals applying to if you choose to do that?
Thank you, Greg. Jen, are you taking notes? This is how Greg helps us, keeps us on track.
I, I think on that note, at least to me, I think it would make a lot more sense to have the school years be the timeframe that we. Judge him on rather than calendar years.
It's tricky because the evaluation process starts really in late January to early February and is delivered by March fifteenth. So it's. It's a hard. You know, if it was say July, right? That would make a lot more sense because it would be a bit easier, but I agree with both what you're saying, Brian and Greg.
I think, go ahead, Greg.
What dictates that, that schedule?
I think it's, uh, standards and, and policy that we have. I don't know where else it comes from about when, and probably the market. Probably derives us about when contracts have to be settled.
Joe, do you know?
Searches, searches.
It's the contract date in March, which most districts, while it's not required by law, follow that process to renew contracts in March.
So we're all on the same cycle. So we're not trying to recruit in the off cycle. I, I think it's possible to deal with the goals. Uh, we, I don't think it's an issue. Anytime we took timeframe, we, we can handle it either way. But if we set a goal. This month or next month. And that we're going to have to evaluate it, uh, a year from now. Sure, there's only six or eight months to start with, but we put that in, we make that, we frame the goal that way. We probably frame most of our goals as twenty month goals or whatever would be. To be done by the end of the twenty twenty two year or something. We just frame the goal with the timeframe involved. I think we can handle it. And what we'd be evaluating next year might be an interim measure that we hope to reach by the end of December. That'd be one way to handle it. I think, I think it's a soluble problem.
So as we're having this conversation, and like I said, this is just for information tonight, we're not voting or deciding on anything. Would the board find it beneficial to do a work session prior to our next meeting so that we can, really sit down and say, yes, we want to have this whole process, or no, we don't. And here is our timeline, because it's really, it's the timeline that we have to start to make more concrete. And especially if we're going to do things like a 360 or goal setting. Go ahead, Greg.
Just an interject, interjection that there's a budget committee meeting before the next board meeting.
Okay. A workshop at another time, or we could just put a significant amount of time on the agenda next meeting to discuss it. What is, what are you all thinking?
I think, Brandy, we should, you know, like you said, add a little bit of time. You know, during a regular board meeting, since we do have another, you know, meeting before that, that way it wouldn't require another evening. And as you're setting maybe the timeframes, we could move a few things around to spend a little bit more time on that one.
I think we can at least adopt the timeline in a meeting. I think if we do decide to go on the goals, maybe that would need to be a separate conversation in a workshop. Okay, are there any other questions or thoughts about this?
Joe, I think it's going to be useful for us to hear from you, what you think about the idea of including goals. That are specific to a particular timeframe.
Well, I've, I've been reviewing the, I mean, it's on, I think it's page 39 of the packet. 13 of the, of the document, if they were separate. And looking at those goals, we develop them in the next few months, and then we go through them, you know, there's probably good progress. It looks like it's a check-in. That the superintendent gives an update on the progress toward those goals by sometime in December. So I think goals are a good way to have a couple of specific things to point out, because, you know, as the, the indicators have all kinds of different activities you're going on. If you're looking for a specific kind of a progress in a goal or in meetings, some kind of a target, that's a good way to develop it. I certainly don't think 14 goals is good. I think keeping us tied to the overall goals of the strategic plan are important, because that's really, that's the work of the district. And so if we can find some kind of a metric that we put in and say, let's make progress towards X, Y, or Z, and it's in strategic plan. And we can, you know, come up with a couple of goals that, that fit for, as, and as just a sample progress indicator, I think that would be fine, too. I mean, it just allows you to say, how, how did you make progress specifically on this, you know, target that's in the strategic plan?
There is a recommended annual timeline schedule also in the packet for everybody's information to look over and think about and bring forward for next meeting. Any other questions? I know this feels like a long way off, and it's like we just did it, because we did literally just do it. But I think that taking a more conscious approach and being really intentional about our timeline is going to help the entire process and the outcome, yeah.
It certainly helps me, it helps put it together, so.
So speaking of which, superintendent contract renewal is the next point of order we have. Let me just pull this up. Um, so every year the board evaluates the superintendent and their performance and reevaluates the contract. The board has delivered the evaluation to Dr. Morlock and the personnel, personnel committee. And Dr. Morlock have come together and agreed upon a contract. So tonight, the board will vote on the contract that's been recommended by the personnel committee and agreed on by Dr. Morlock.
Well, I'll make a motion then, I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors extend Dr. Joe Morlock's superintendent contract through June 30th, 2024.
I second.
Ah, she beat you. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Brandy, is this the, you remind me again how we're, we're about, we're voting on what here? Like the same contract? Or how, how?
Sorry.
I'm just kind of confused on what we're, like, is this just year three of the contract that we're voting on now?
We're renewing the contract for, it's a three-year contract. So last year we renewed it and it was three years, but every time that we renew it, it pushes it to another year, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So it's like last year's, we just continue on last year's contract, just give another year on the end of it. Puts three years, that we're saying?
Yeah.
But we did give him, a four-point, was it a 4.5 cost of living raise? To equate that with the, the teachers. And we did increase something else.
When did we do that?
It, it's in the current, it's in the contract.
It's part of the proposal that we work as the personnel committee.
We have, yeah.
What we're voting on here, is that when we need to approve that as a board?
Yeah, we are, it's in the contract, nobody's given it to me yet until we approve the contract. When we approve the contract, you will get the raise, the, the increase.
So if we vote yes on this, then we're also voting yes to increase his pay by 4.5%?
Yeah, the contract that the personnel committee and Dr. Morlock agreed upon was sent out to the board on Saturday morning for your review. And there was actually, yeah.
I have issues with increasing compensation at a time when we are potentially facing a massive, I think that could cause us real issues in the community. To raise pay and then announce that we might have this massive budget deficit.
I would counter that we, it's in line with what we've given our teachers and our classified staff. And we'd also have a price to pay if we lost our superintendent, because he got the message that we didn't support him.
We also did a cost evaluation of other districts in the area. And we're down, down towards the bottom of compensation towards, towards our superintendent as compared to other districts. And so to keep him, like we've done with the classified members and, and the teachers to, to keep him, his position, comparable to, to other districts, we, we, raised it so he's about in the middle. He's not at the top and, and no way, going to be there, but this is also something that, that is, is, I feel is fair and is not going to, break the budget.
When you say he's in the middle, he's in the middle of all superintendents in, Oregon or?
Comparable districts to ours.
Who's superintendents have the same amount of tenure or just all superintendents?
Superintendents in our area of, of likes, like-sized school districts. Sherwood, Canby, Oregon, Trails, we did a, a, a cost analysis, a cost analysis of over 10 school districts. And looked at all the, all the numbers.
There was a mix of length of service, there was a mix of, yeah, time, time that they were in their position. And, you know, as we said, this puts, this puts our superintendent in about the middle of the pack, which has been what our goal has been for our classified and for our, teachers as well.
What did our teachers get? I was just curious, what was a percent on that?
3.5 over each of the, 3.5 this year and 3.5 next year.
Plus two more school days.
Correct.
I guess I just like, you know, I, I get why you did this, Rebecca, excuse me. I'm a, I think what Brandon does make a good point where, you know, just tonight, we've talked about after school, you know, adding cost. I, I think moving forward, you know, this gets me back to like having longer sessions, talking about issues. As a board, so we can hear all you guys' stuff, because I do, even if I disagree with you guys sometimes, I still learn stuff, is, you know, going through these bigger issues, talking about them, because my bigger issue here isn't what we're, you guys are talking about there, it's more like, how many different ways are we spending more and how many different ways are we spending less as a board? Just all the little things that we do that keep adding up when we could have a potential shortfall. But I think, Dr. Joe, you've done a great job with our ending fund balance, too. So it's like I bragged about that the last month. Do you know, to people when they ask me, you know, about performance or something like that, I, I go right to that one. But I think what Brian's making is a good point that we have to have that discussion soon about like how we're spending taxpayers' money, you know, way ahead of time before we, we get there.
Because if we keep having that conversation for the past six years.
Not really, Bob, we really haven't had that discussion as a board, we, we.
We have absolutely. That every time we've had a budget report, and we've had that when we adopted that policy. We've had it when we've watched our ending fund balance rise from $338,000 to over $9 million. That didn't come from throwing pennies away. That didn't come from not monitoring how we're doing our spending.
So you, you were on the board. As you could speak to this, when we were doing really poorly, when we got to that, that low point. So how did we get to that low point? Did we just spend too much money, or how did that happen?
I think that's a really good conversation to have, and I think it could be a great conversation that could help inform you on these decisions. But I think that historic perspective of our budget isn't really relevant to the exact agenda item that we're talking about right now. Brian, I know you had a thought to share as well. I don't know how the board feels about continuing the conversation regarding the budget specifically.
I, I just think that if we vote to significantly, the superintendent's pay with the budget situation that we are staring down, that will cause a lot of hurt feelings in the community. It won't look good. You know, if this were the time when we passed the, the, contract for the teachers and the staff, then I would probably feel differently and, but it's not. It's a global health emergency that has potentially devastating budgetary consequences for our schools. And so I think it behooves us to save costs everywhere we can, and executive pay inflation is infamous flaw, I think, of the public school model. We should do, we would do well to try and stem it at this particular moment. And maybe once this has passed, you know, we can look at doing some sort of catch-up to, make up for what we did this time, but I can't, I can't support this if we're increasing his pay.
I would certainly hope that if, if you don't support this, that you let Joe know that before this meeting. And he didn't just walk into the meeting and get sandbagged by two board members who have decided that he's not worth the, the contract that we're offering him. That there's not a value that he's like the chairman of Coca-Cola who's just getting the golden umbrella. Because that's the way it comes across, is that it feels like Joe didn't know what was going on. He walked into a meeting thinking that a routine extension of his contract was coming up. And now he's being told that he's responsible for potential, damage to our long-term budget and our finances. That's a, that's an unfair position to put any employee in, particularly to do it in a public setting when they had little, possibly no warning that this was coming up.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily, your characterization of what we're saying, Bob, but I appreciate your point.
Go ahead, Greg.
Cherrick, I want to make a clarification on the difference between the contracts with the classified and the licensed associations and the difference in the contract with the superintendent. Each of them have a three-year lifespan. The licensed and the classified contracts build into those three years, an increase that stays the same through every one of those years. The superintendent's contract, while it is three years, goes on a year-by-year basis for the compensation. And so what the personnel committee is recommending is, in essence, first of all, a catch-up to where it has been, to match it toward the licensed and the, and the classified contracts. And it is not, it is not an increase in itself over what is already done. If the superintendent contract would have been done similar to our associate, or let me reverse it the other way. If we were doing this, the, to not grant this would be like breaking the contract with the licensed folks. It would be like saying, because we anticipate a budget shortfall, we are now going to cut the, percentage that was promised to that contract. Just, I wanted to point out the differences in how those contracts are done, although the length of time is the same, the compensation is different between licensed and classified. And so this is, in a sense, the board making a decision each year where we don't, we don't do that with our licensed and our classified ones, we just automatically give them the raise. So it's a little bit of a, an unfair comparison to call this, an increase that is different from our licensed and our classified association contracts.
Brandy, I think one thing to me is like, it just goes back to how we're all comfortable assimilating information. I still think we'd be stronger as a board, hearing each other, you know, having discussions in a work session or however you'd like to, to structure that. You know, maybe one month we have less presentations and things like that, where we could have some of these longer discussions. You know, on like, to say finances in general, so that would meet what Rebecca and Bob just said, and then meet what Brian just says. I would just like to have those discussions as a board, not an ad hoc committee, not another committee, not, not a budget committee. But as, as a board, just in general, like if we feel like we're, we're doing good or we're not, or we're spending money.
I'll ask this, did, did you share your concerns with Joe's contract with either Joe or Chair Penner before this meeting?
I'm telling you how I feel about talking about money in general, I don't not support this.
Did you share your concerns about his contract that you're raising now? Did you share that with either one of them before this meeting?
Are we having a discussion about just general here, Bob, or what, what do you want?
We're having a discussion about not sandbagging our employee.
I didn't say I was.
And it sure feels that way. And I can't get an answer from you whether you shared your concern about his contract prior to this meeting.
You don't know how I feel about this, Bob, because I haven't voted yet.
Okay. Having some conversation around the process, we could do that, although we've all been here for the process. I know that, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Brian, regarding the budget, of course, we have to keep the budget in mind always, it's one of our governing responsibilities. I am confident that this 4.5% is feasible within our budget, and I think it's a responsible choice. I will also say that last year, last March, when we did this evaluation, we did not give much of a cost of living increase because it was the beginning of the pandemic and we had no idea what was coming. And, you know, there's still a lot of uncertainty, but we do have a better idea of our financial standing at this point. And I do think that it is incredibly important to value all of our employees and balance it with fiscal responsibility. And I think that that's what this contract.
Brandy, I'd like to say just one more thing. I support this percentage. I support what Dr. Joe's done. I'm just asking for more discussion as a board on major topics. And if that hurts some of these feelings, that's fine. I, we're all adults here, let's, let's have more discussions. I'm just asking for more discussions. Joe, thank you very much for all your hard work, I think you're doing a great job.
Welcome.
I'm gonna all vote for this. I'm just trying to make this conversation bigger, so we, we talk about every dollar that we spend, I think this is deserved and. every dollar that we spend. I think this is, uh, deserved and, uh, so thanks, Dr. Joe.
Well, I think I, I must say that we agreed originally when we were asked, the Personnel Committee was asked to take on this, this role to, to work out details with Joe of what, what was, was feasible and what, what was right. And so I, I, I think we've done that discussion. And I'm sorry you didn't understand it. I don't feel like you, you had enough information.
I just don't think it was done very transparently. I mean, this was sent to us on Saturday or, uh, for consideration on Tuesday, and it's not even clear from the language of this section of the agenda that that's what we're approving. So I, I'm sorry, Bob, but maybe if it was more transparent, I would have raised it with Joe. But it seems like it's sort of being, you know, flown by in the night here.
It, it does a superintendent contract renewal on the agenda. I don't know how much more straightforward we could get for that. Everybody was a part of the evaluation process. Everybody was a part of giving the evaluations, Dr. Morlock. Everybody was there and we said, now the Personnel Committee will be meeting with him to discuss contract. They've done that. I don't know. We've completely followed the process and the timeline. I'm not sure what you mean by more transparency unless you just mean more conversations. Maybe you would like to be on the Personnel Committee next year. I, these are things that I think you should be thinking about.
I, I think what Brian's trying to say though is just if we had, if we were doing this a little bit sooner and we just had this discussion for however long, as a board, take what the, the committee did, uh, that would be a lot easier to wrap your head around this. That's what I sense Brian saying. I think overall as a board, we're happy with Dr. Joe. So it's kind of getting, it's not supposed to be personal here. He's pretty thick-skinned. I get it. Um, that's the thousand hat job he's got, but I still think had we done this a little sooner and then as a board, we talk about it for however long, 10 minutes, 20 minutes, and then we hear from the committee to have a chance to, you know, agree or disagree. I think that's what Brian's saying, just a little bit more get out in front of some of these, you know, these bigger issues. But again, I still I think that's what Brian's trying to say.
I have a clarifying question, Brandy. Is the purpose of committees to bring proposals to the board that we have discussed and analyzed and then have the vote, board vote on it? Am I understanding correctly?
That the committee has discussed that?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So the Personnel Committee did the work. We actually took extra time because this should have been renewed already. But we had clarifying questions for Joe, which he answered for us. And now we're proposing that we approve this renewal.
I think that the committee did what we asked it to do. We did not tell it that we wanted to have a discussion at the board level of what the salary should be. This has been, this is sort of implied that we can always discuss it if we want to. But I think the committee did what we asked it to do. I think it's possible for the board to tell the committee or to be in advance, have a discussion about what the compensation range we should look at should be. That has been some done sometimes in the past, but it hasn't always been done. Most, what it looks to me like when, what I understood the committee to be doing was to be negotiating the, the contract, including the pay range. And obviously if, if the board doesn't want to endorse the four and a half percent, we certainly could vote not to. I wouldn't, I would vote for the four and a half percent because it's in line with what we've done for all the other employees. And the fact that it comes at a different time shouldn't be a penalty to Joe. So I'm going to support this contract. But I think Dave's got a, a point that we did this without really giving the committee any new guidance about how, uh, you know, about constraints or the limitations or whatever that we would see on a on the, uh, the pay. So the committee's done its work and done it well. And I'm, I'm ready to vote for it.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean,
I would just say one more thing. It was not done in the night. That is a characterization that is not fair. Now I'm done.
Uh, I would just say that, you know, it, I thank the committee for their work. You know, obviously we just had a, a thing with start times where we had a committee do work and we made a decision that was different than what that committee recommended. So it's completely within the board's prerogative to discuss the recommendations of the committees. It is not our job to rubber stamp what those committees recommend. And I think that we would be wise to freeze as much of our costs as we can, knowing that we are headed for a financial iceberg potentially. And so that would be my suggestion that we should, we should not increase the superintendent's pay this year out of an abundance of caution. And I don't know what motion I would need to make.
Well, we have a motion, right? So we have a motion in a second. Is, do you want to make a different motion, Brian?
How about I move to amend the motion, uh, to freeze the superintendent's pay for the contractor in question.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion dies. We go back to our original motion, uh, which was to accept the contract as presented. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. All those opposed? Okay. It passes six to one with Director Shannon in opposition. Joe, I just wanted to take a second. I'll be quick because I know we're running behind schedule here a little bit, but I have really enjoyed watching you grow into this leadership role. I remember going back and hiring for the interim position and site visits and like us, we own that feels like it was a lifetime ago. So much has changed and, and grown. And the last three years have been a whirlwind of activity. But under your leadership, I really think that, um, we are becoming a more inclusive, a more compassionate and a more thriving school district. That's because of your hard work and because of your team's hard work. And I think because of that and the passage of the bond, really great things are happening in Newburgh. And nobody knows what the next three years is going to hold, but I think it's a bright future. And, um, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you and I'm thankful for that opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Penner.
Okay. Next up on our agenda is our resolution twenty twenty oh six bond sale proceeds. And I believe, wow, Nikki, it got a lot darker in your background there since we saw you last. But please go ahead whenever you're ready.
It got dark outside. Nah, it's okay. This will be a short one. Just, it's pretty straightforward, self-explanatory. We have to acknowledge the bond proceeds that came in in order to pay some bills out of it. We did not need to have a supplemental budget because there is an exemption because the timing of the bond when it was passed and everything, but we do need to have this resolution in place so we can start spending and paying our bills around the bond.
Okay. Any questions for Nikki? No, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt resolution twenty twenty oh six, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Newburgh School District, twenty-nine J, making appropriations to utilize bond proceeds by title only.
A second.
Okay. With a motion and a second is their discussion. Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Nikki. Okay. Last thing on our agenda tonight is a discussion of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two academic calendar with, uh, Greg. Yes, with Greg.
So we are later, uh, on this than usual for a lot of reasons, in part because of COVID, in part because of holding it for a while to see if we were going to start it, to get the start time decisions or the block schedule done. But we are proposing two different calendars to the board, which have been in the packet. They are just for discussion tonight. And if there are further questions or adaptations to either of the drafts, we can adjust those and bring them back for the next meeting. Uh, one will ask for the approval for this. Draft A is our, um, traditional start after Labor Day. The, um, Labor Day, it, this year that we're currently in is the latest it's been, and next year it is only one day earlier. However, the added complication for the calendar for this, this next year is that September seventh is, uh, a major Jewish holiday, which a lot of school districts around us have already decided to not have the first day of school be on that day. It is not a paid holiday as part of our contract. So we're not talking about any changes that way. We're just talking about not having the first day of school, which is such a significant thing for families to come to be on that holiday in response to a, a lot of feedback we've gotten from state and other organizations all over the place. So the draft A of the calendar, what we go through is make sure and, uh, make sure we have all of the correct days, uh, according to our contracts for preparation and for professional development, for conferences and that sort of thing and holidays. And then we, we work through, make sure we are adding with the, with the third year of the licensed and classified, or third year of the license, second of the classified contracts, we add a student day to make a hundred and seventy-five point five days, which is an increase over this current year. So when you map all that out and go onto the calendar, that means the ending day, the last day of school would be June twenty-first, which is quite late. And so we decided to also present draft B, which is starting before Labor Day, uh, Wednesday, September first. And when that calendar comes into play, the, uh, last day of school for that would be June fifteenth. We shared this information with our associations for them to make sure to double check that we did our, all our number adding correctly and covered all the days. And the Licensed Association, the teachers surveyed their members and they got about fifty percent response rate. And of those who responded, sixty-one percent preferred draft B, which was the one starting before Labor Day on September first. So we're presenting this to the board and the only thing that I would, um, add before I take any questions are, we've got Wednesdays are late start days by one hour with question mark. And the only reason we put question marks with that is not knowing what the decision was going to be on start time, wondering if we may switch that to an early release as opposed to a late start. And so that's something that would be decided separate from the calendar approval. Calendar approval at the board level is about the days that school is in session. So are there any questions about either of the two drafts? Or anything that you notice? We always are, we always know, no matter how many people look at it, we can miss things. So feel free, if you notice something, to let us know that as well, so we can get it right before approval.
I don't have a question, just a, you know, a reminder as we look at this, that we did once before propose starting school before Labor Day. And we got a lot of folks very upset about that. At the time, you know, the folks who just were upset about the fact of starting before Labor Day didn't really carry a lot of weight for me. But what did carry weight back then was that folks didn't feel like they were given enough, uh, advanced notice. You know, folks make a lot of vacation plans and, uh, are just used to that traditional start after Labor Day. And that was actually, we were given more notice than, than we are now. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, that is very valid, Bob and Ron both. And we did discuss that. And one of the, one of the factors that mitigates that a little, there's no way I'm going to know exactly how much is with COVID. Families likely have not made as many plans for vacation as they would in previous years. So yes, we, we recognize that is an issue. But we've also gotten feedback that June twenty-first is quite late in the process. And one of the things that, um, teachers remind us often is that it is really difficult to keep students' attention in June period and to have, going all the way to June, that's three weeks of, three and a, three weeks and a couple of days of work where you're really wrestling to keep their attention. So that's again, the reason to bring that as a proposal for the board for another option.
Thank you, Bob. I'm glad you shared that. I agree. However, yeah, Greg, with COVID, I, yeah, people might not have made plans. And also, you know what? If there was a, a year-round option that would put my children in school next solid nine months, I would vote for that. So I could be an, uh, an outlier in that, but, um, I'm hoping that we have a lot of enthusiasm for returning next fall, whenever that is. Okay. This was just information. I guess if there's any questions in the next couple of weeks, get those, um, over to Greg, Joe. And we can have further discussion and, uh, talk about it in two weeks.
And I guess just one thing I'll say verbally, this is in the packet, but just to make it completely transparent, the draft A does make a change. Normally we have, there's a, a grading day at the end of the first semester that is a non-school day for students. And normally that is on a Friday. It's been that way for a very long time. With the proposal of draft A, we moved that to Monday to balance the semester days a little better. They're still off balance. It's five and a half days different. Five and a half more days in second semester than first semester. But if we went with that Friday option as traditional, that actually makes it a seven and a half day difference. So just want to make it crystal clear to everybody that that is a difference from previous proposals and a difference between the two proposals.
Greg, were we going to submit this like in the, um, superintendent's memo or something to the public to get, to get feedback?
Sure, absolutely.
And Ken, this is a silly little housekeeping thing, but the thing that I see is that the lines on the calendars are not all like calendar block set up. It's a tiny little thing, but it's something I noticed, which could frustrate other people.
Yeah. Um, the good thing is that Rena makes a completely different calendar that we proposed. This is just taken directly off of the spreadsheet that we use to make sure we count all of our academic days and have that all accurate.
I thought it was to represent given COVID and all that.
All right. Any other questions for Greg? Okay. And we encourage the attendees we have, I don't know how many are left now, thirteen, to help us get the word out to, to get apparent feedback on this. Community feedback, I should say. Okay. Thank you, Greg. Well, that brings us to the end of our meeting. We will have our Budget Committee meeting next week. Oh, yep. Go ahead. Joe, Dave.
Brad, did we have any on block schedule tonight? I thought we were going to talk about that. No?
No, it was, it was on there in relation to the, um, the school start time. And so that's why we talked about it in that context a little bit, but it wasn't a standalone agenda item. I, I'm assuming it's going to come back on our agendas though, at, at some point is, is the schools
Yeah, I'll give an update to the progress in our next meeting. Uh, we're still working. There are several details that we have not finished off yet. So I'll bring that back for our next meeting. We'll talk about the, the progress of what's happening.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So two weeks, April twenty-seventh, we've got our Budget Committee meeting at six. Um, after that, we'll go into Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation. It's amazing. Consent agenda, our, we'll get our monthly financials. Potentially a comparison report, goal three of our strategic plan. Approve our superintendent evaluation process. So we'll be sure to put a little extra time in there so we can have that conversation and then approve the calendar. Okay. Well, have a good couple of weeks, everyone, and I'll see you back on the twenty-seventh.
Well, we're good. The, the next Tuesday night's meeting, listening session.
Yes. And the twentieth is our, is our, um, listening session with the community. So not an actual board meeting. We won't be participating, but it's a chance for us to, to listen to, to hear. Thank you, Rebecca. And we'll be seeing more of Jen, our Board Secretary, the, the second person there behind Greg, in our, in our upcoming meetings as well. So, all right. Meeting's adjourned. Everybody have a good night.